For Monday, December 4th, 2017, I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing, "Oh, Canada."
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all thy sons command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you to the National Film Board of Canada for the images of our country and to one of the members of the Grand Prairie Men of Note for the audio. So we'll start off our meeting with the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Can I get a motion to adopt that set of minutes, please? Counselor Palat.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'd recommend that council approve the minutes from the city council meeting held Monday, November 20th, as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor Palat. Any errors or omissions in that set of minutes that we need to correct before we adopt them? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Make sure your votes registered there. Thank you. And that motion carries, and then we'll move on to the adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as presented? Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move that council adopt the agenda as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well, and that brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity that we have at every regular city council meeting for any community member to address council on any community-related matter, as long as it's not the subject of a public hearing. I know that we have a couple of public hearings tonight, so if you're here intending to speak to either of those two public hearing items, we'd ask you that you just wait until the public hearing portion. But was there anybody here that wanted to speak to council on any matter that wasn't the subject of a public hearing? Come on down, sir. You are our lucky winner. So as you come forward, we'll ask you to keep your presentation to about five minutes, and if you'd just like to introduce yourself and anybody that joins you at the table, then welcome. We have a sign-in sheet. Is that what's going on up there now? All right. It'll make it easier on the recording secretary to make sure that we have everybody's names written properly. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Jason Gunter. That seems really loud. I am the chair for St. John Paul II, the new Catholic high school that's being opened up on 132nd Avenue. And to my right is Tammy Brown. She's my vice chair. Our concern...
Hello, everyone. Thank you for seeing us. Yep, thank you.
The reason we're here tonight is we are concerned for the safety of our students accessing this school from 132nd Avenue. We'd like to lobby for a traffic signal light at the intersection of the school entrance and 132nd Avenue. With the parents, teachers, students, and buses trying to exit 132nd Avenue, turning east, and they have to cross a westbound lane, it's going to be very difficult and take lots of time. First student is concerned with their schedules, trying to get out on time when they have to take a longer time to turn. We also will be having new drivers starting in September, and they're inexperienced. They're brave, so there could be potential incidents happening, and we do not... We're trying to avoid that. There was lots of incidents with 68th Avenue and St. Joe's High School, so we're just trying to avoid that. We would also like to lobby if we're dropping speed from 70 to 60 on that bound... on that street avenue as well. We'd also like immediate installation of the school zone signage, those yellow school zone placards that we have. We could have them put up so people are aware that the school is there and opening. Some people, if they don't have students, may not be aware that it's a high school. They just know it's a big building on the horizon being built. And we would also like the completion of pedestrian infrastructure, signalized crossing lights, pathways, sidewalks, to make access to the school for the students that do walk or bike from April to June and September, so they can cross safely without just running through traffic. We would also like to make... have the school as a city transit bus stop. I know it's not your master plan, but I would like it to be added into it, as that could be a great source of revenue for you guys, and it would take students off the streets from driving, and they would be using the transit system as just another safer way for them to access the school. I have talked to Wade Nellis, the traffic system specialist, today, and he's trying to get me some numbers regarding incidents on 68th. Traffic count that was done last week, they've had it posted right at the entrance to the school, so he was gonna get me those numbers as well. And then I will be writing a letter to yourself, the mayor, and to all the councils to follow up with all the suggestions we have and everything we would like to see moving forward.
Great. Thanks very much for, I guess, the heads-up that we'll be receiving a letter. There is always an opportunity for council members to ask questions of any presenters or any delegations. Is there any questions for our delegation? Seeing none, Counsel Freezone.
Thank you. I wasn't actually aware that it was open already. It is already?
No, it'll be open again in February.
Okay, end of February. So there is a date. Thank you. That helps. Okay.
Any other questions? Seeing none, and understanding that this will come back more formally, you said that you'll be addressing a letter to council to follow up on the specifics.
Yes.
Okay. So in our agenda, we deal with our delegation business towards the end. The most likely outcome today would be a referral to a standing committee where we can get a report from administration on the specifics related to the requests. Counselor O'Toole, did you have a question?
I do. Thank you very much for coming here today. Do you happen to have any idea on the number of students that'll be moving in in February or when the school opens? And is there gonna be a difference between next September?
Yes. The number moving forward is 247 students plus staff, and then as in September with the new grade eights coming in, I'm gonna guess probably about another 160 students. I don't have a firm number on that yet, but it will increase quite a bit, and then every year it will grow as the schools' years roll up.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. I don't see anybody else in the queue, so thanks again, Tammy, Jason, for being here to raise the issue with council. We'll look forward to receiving your letter, and as I said, this will likely, at the end of our council meeting, will likely be referred to a standing committee where we can get more details from administration.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Was there anyone else here this evening who wanted to come forward and address council on any matter that wasn't the subject of a public hearing? Yeah, so council doesn't always... So the question from the audience, which nobody could hear because you're too far from the microphone... No, no, that's okay. That's okay. Was... No, that's okay. We... Council doesn't often act as development authority. Typically, when we act as development authority at committee, we will ask for those speaking to that subject or that development permit at the time that we're discussing the permit. So I think we will hold that, the public comment on that part, until we get to the development permit stage. We'll have a brief introduction from administration, and then we'll hear from any delegations in support of or opposed. So we'll hold that thought. So there's two issues there, public hearings and the development permit. Was there any other delegations that wanted to speak to any other matter other than those two that were listed? Seeing nobody coming forward, I will close the delegation portion of our agenda. We'll move on to public hearings, and our one and only public hearing this evening is Land Use Bylaw Amendment C-1260-84, a suite of exciting housekeeping amendments. I'll look to administration for an introduction.
Hey, thank you, Mayor Given. Just before I begin, I'd like to apologize for the lack of graphics in this PowerPoint. That's just because housekeeping amendments are usually text-heavy, and because of that, we'll... You can really only discuss them with text. So that being said, the item for council's consideration is a set of 17 housekeeping amendments to the land use bylaw. The land use bylaw was adopted by council in September of 2013. At this time, administration noted that periodic reviews of the provisions would likely be necessary to ensure that the land use bylaw remained consistent and relevant as time progressed. Over the past 10 months, planners and development officers who administer the land use bylaw on a daily basis maintained a running list of provisions that are either inconsistent or lack clarity. Administration is here tonight to bring forth the proposed solutions to the land use bylaw provisions and ask for council's adoption. A housekeeping amendment is an amendment that does not alter the intent of the land use bylaw, does not increase or decrease restrictions, and does not affect individual property owners or the business community. Housekeeping amendments are internally initiated, meaning there is no applicant or adjacent properties involved like there would be for something like a rezoning application. Two examples of a housekeeping amendment would be things like fixing typos and correcting cross-referencing errors. So essentially, what administration is doing tonight is we're proposing 17 changes to the land use bylaw to ultimately clean up the document. The proposed amendments were broken down into three categories. These categories consist of seven amendments to the signed schedule, six amendments to the development application requirements, and four amendments that are classified as miscellaneous. As you will note, attached as appendix one to the planning report is a table that describes the rationale for each change. If council has any questions regarding specific changes for a particular provision, I'm able to speak to why those changes were necessary. Regarding public consultation, administration advertised the housekeeping amendments twice in the Daily Herald Tribune. Because the proposed amendments are housekeeping in nature and do not affect individual property owners or the business community, external mailouts and property signs were not necessary. Administration did not receive any responses from the public regarding the proposed amendments. So to summarize, administration is proposing 17 housekeeping amendments to the land use bylaw. These amendments are technical in nature, meaning they will not alter the intent of the bylaw, nor will they affect individual property owners or the business community. So for these reasons, administration recommends that council give land use bylaw C-1260-84 all three readings. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Mr. Thompson. Any questions from council? I know we all have the table that Cameron referenced in our package. Any questions for administration? Counselor Freezone.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given, and thank you very much, Cameron, for your reports and for undertaking this housekeeping exercise. Just a couple of quick comments. Really appreciate the changes that were represented in the table of how it was originally, and then the wording changes and how you changed that. Really appreciate that. It's very helpful for council, at least for me on council. The other thing is, I think it's more than housekeeping, because we're cutting essentially the red tape on renewable energy in residential zones, so you won't require development permit through this now?
Through the mayor, that's right. That's correct.
Yeah, so a little more than housekeeping is some good stuff coming through this. I did have one question, though. In regards to the signs, I think it's Schedule B, Section 5.2i, and it says that electronic message display that is located within 30.5 meters of a lot line in a residential district seems a little close to residential district for electronic messaging sign. Do we have any examples currently in the city that are there that would warrant such a close proximity, or is this just a number that we feel we're comfortable with?
So through the mayor, are you referring to the number itself, so 30.5 meters?
Yeah, that never changed.
Yeah, that never changed.
Changes, but I did note that it was interesting that 30.5 meters is fairly close to residential, especially with the electronic messaging sign at any time of day, so...
Yeah, no, I'm not able to recall an example off the top of my head, but I do know that the reason for this change was that there was an inconsistency in the text, and that was the justification for the change. But no, I apologize, I'm not able to provide you with an example.
Okay, just something interesting that I noted. I don't know if other council members feel that that's too close, like I do, but I thought it was worthwhile to just bring up, but otherwise, this is all great stuff. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Counsel Freezone. Counselor Palat.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Great report. It was nice to see some housekeeping, to speak to Mr. Freezone's comments here. I just had a question on a couple of specific ones. 17.5, that we're gonna remove this provision in its entirety. I'm just wondering if that's going to be a pro or a con, because, you know, right now I understand that you could put an application without all the required stuff, and the argument says it doesn't need to be necessary. I guess I'd be more concerned that if an application doesn't come in 100%, that we just reject it and send them away without even taking their paperwork? So can you maybe explain how that would work in that process?
So through the mayor, I... Yeah, I just... I think that the justification for this was that we were concerned about an application coming forward that, like you say, may be incomplete, and then the applicant can argue that they don't need to submit something in order for us to process it, and we felt that that may not lead to a successful application being reviewed by us, so that's the reason for that amendment.
Okay. And so I'm assuming that administration would just leave them from front counters, saying until we figure out this clause, we can't accept your application at this time? Is that...
I'm actually gonna call Stuart Wright to the mic. He's the manager of permitting, and he might be able to provide a better answer with that.
Thanks, Karen.
Mayor Given, Counselor Palat, just to confirm on this, it certainly wouldn't be that an applicant would be turned away for a submission coming in. It's just that we have requirements that can be studies needed, information. That is something that we just look at to see that we have that sort of fully covered, and not that, as Ms. Thompson mentioned, that someone could sort of challenge, say, "Well, I don't need to submit this information." That's just the purpose of this housekeeping amendment.
Okay. Okay, thanks for clarification. And then on Schedule B, under the portable signs, we've got that use in advertising for a temporary period of time. Do we have a definition of temporary? Like, I'm just wondering how that would be viewed? That was... That's gotta be Section 1.2A?
Yeah, so through the mayor... So first of all, the reason for that change itself was because previously it said it had a one-year timeframe attached to it, but we don't take permits for signs, so there's no way to tell when that time period starts and ends. So we are proposing to remove that time period from the phrase, but we also want to maintain somehow that the sign is temporary in nature. And so when administration was reviewing other portable sign definitions, it appeared... it was apparent that the other sign definitions are using the term temporary in there, so there is no definition for temporary in our bylaw, but that's more or less consistent with other municipalities.
Okay, so I guess the concern for me would just be that temporary could be viewed differently from different people, that maybe we should put a little bit more timelines on that, and just a thought, but... But thanks for clarifying that with me.
Thanks, Counsel Palat. Counselor Freezone.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Thank you. I did appreciate the chart, and not a huge question, but perhaps a recommendation that since we're housekeeping anyway, perhaps in 19.16, we could correct the spelling of summarizes.
Through the mayor, is that in the table or is that in the bylaw?
That's in the table.
Okay.
Is it correct in the bylaw?
I believe it's correct in the bylaw, yes.
Never you mind then. Thank you.
Sure they'll confirm that before they...
I will confirm that, though, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions for administration at this point? Seeing none from council, this is the opportunity during a public hearing where we call for anybody who wishes to speak in support of the proposed changes to the bylaw. Is there anyone in attendance tonight that wished to speak to the proposed changes to the bylaw? I'll ask one final time if there's anyone who wished to come forward to speak to the proposed changes to the bylaw. And seeing none, council, one last opportunity before we close the discussion portion and move on to business arising. Any other questions for administration? Seeing none, then I will close the public hearing. We'll move on to business arising, and I would look for a motion to give first reading to bylaw C-1260-84. Counselor Palat.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'd recommend that we give first reading to bylaw C-1260-84, being a bylaw to amend the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counsel Palat. There's no discussion or debate on first reading. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Palat, do you want to carry on with the other pieces there?
Give second reading to bylaw C-1260-84.
Thanks very much, Counsel Palat. So a motion for second reading. Any discussion or debate on second reading of the proposed housekeeping amendments to the land use bylaw? Again, seeing none and nobody ringing in, I will call for the vote on second reading. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Palat.
Okay, that council have third reading for bylaw C-1260-84.
Thanks very much, Counselor Palat. So this is a motion for us to have third and final reading here tonight. In order for council to pass all three readings of a bylaw in a single sitting, we need to have this motion. It must pass unanimously, otherwise the third and final reading would come back at a subsequent council meeting. Is there any discussion and debate as to the merits of having third and final reading here tonight? Seeing none, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, so we can have third and final reading. Counselor Palat.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I recommend that council give third reading to bylaw C-1260-84.
Thanks very much, Counsel Palat. One last opportunity if there's any discussion or debate on these exciting housekeeping amendments to land use bylaw. Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. That motion carries. Thank you very much. That finishes all of our public hearing business. I believe we have no items of unfinished business under number seven, and so we'll move into reports. We do have item 8.1, which is development permit PL-160252. We will look to administration for an introduction to this item, and I'll just, as I did sort of at the outset, inform the public and anybody that might be watching. Council typically has delegated development authority to a subcommittee of council, so typically when we handle development permits, that's where we do it. We're doing this here tonight because the specific subject property is a direct control district, where council has specifically said that council as a whole is the development authority. So that's why we're doing it here tonight rather than at a committee level. So you'll have to excuse us, because it's a bit of an irregular process for us doing it here. By that, I mean I'm out of practice at doing it this way, so... But we'll look to administration for an introduction on the topic.
Thank you, Mayor Given, and members of council, for the folks at home watching tonight on our webcast. Matt Ellis, Development Officer II at the city. We're here tonight for development permit PL-160252. It's for the building known as the Karen. The subject property is actually comprised of three parcels. These parcels highlighted in blue in the picture on the left-hand side of the screen, and the parcels highlighted in yellow on the air photo on the right. The subject property, as Mayor Given has pointed out, is zoned in a DC, a direct control district. This specific direct control district is DC-14, and for this district, council is the sole development authority in the DC-14 district. There is a little bit of history involved with this development permit. The original Karen building, which is the building that applies to the floor plan in the top right corner of the screen, the original building was approved is in 2010, and this development permit PL-160252 bundled all the uses as one quote "package," and those uses are the dwelling units, and the dwelling units are supported in the second through six stories, the parking lot at 10132104 Avenue, and also the first four commercial uses. Which are these commercial uses on the floor plan? A number of conditions of that development permit deal with site improvements, paving and landscaping of the parking lot that are to be completed by certain dates. So condition four requires 69 parking stalls for residents, visitors, and staff. Conditions six, seven, eight, and 10 pertain to the works that are to be completed by certain dates. Condition six requires paving, or we also call it hard surfacing, asphalt or concrete of the parking lot, curbing and line painting of the parking lot at 10127 and 10131105 Avenue, and that has to be completed by no later than September 30th of 2016, as per the development permit that was issued. Condition seven required a solid board fence of 1.8 meters or six feet high. That board fence highlighted with... by the red line in the picture here and here. That fence has been completed, so we don't need to deal with that anymore, but I wanted to point it out, but again, that's been completed. And we have a lovely picture of the fence at the front of the building, and then another picture of the fence at the rear of the building. This fence along the laneway here was done as a goodwill measure, but again, that's all done. Condition eight is regarding the landscaping that was to be done around the perimeter of the parking lot. Condition eight requires four trees and a grassed area in the easterly portion of the parking lot, and that is to be completed by October 31st of 2016. And the trees are these four trees here, and then there's a grassed area in the easterly end of the parking lot. Condition 10 requires nine trees along the city boulevard, and same date applies, October 31st, 2016. And there's the six red clouds and three blue circles, and apologize for the rudimentary graphics, but those are to be completed in the city boulevard. The applicant, and this is where we get into where we are today, the applicant was unable to complete the paving and landscaping works in 2016 to comply with these conditions. So the applicant requested an extension to the deadline stated in these conditions, and the deadline was granted, and the landscaping works were to be completed by no later than October 31st, 2017, and the paving or hard surfacing, curbing, and line painting was to be completed by no later than September 30th of this year. The applicant has indicated that he was still unable to, despite his best efforts, complete the remaining works. No work has commenced on the hard surfacing on the parking lot, and this picture... both these pictures were taken on November 2nd, and it shows a, well, simply a gravel parking lot, and it's existed that way basically ever since it started to be used. For the landscaping, aside from these four trees that were planted here, no landscaping has commenced on the property. And those trees, and we'll get into that later, they're not very likely to survive, because when the parking lot is eventually hard-surfaced, the works with the equipment would compact the soil, and that's... that would likely cut off the roots or the lifeline of the trees, and then the trees would just simply... they just simply would... wouldn't survive. The applicant has requested an extension to the deadline for the hard surfacing and landscaping works, that condition six, eight, and 10, but this time, instead of a simple one-year extension, the applicant... But this time, instead of a simple one-year extension, the applicant has requested an extension until September 30th, 2022. The applicant also requests a reduction of four parking stalls, and that's an amendment to condition four. For condition six, with the hard surfacing of the parking areas, administration notes that there are a number of benefits to hard surfacing the parking lot. And I note that this is improved aesthetics. It minimizes gravel being dragged onto adjacent streets, and therefore reduce incidence of potholes in the roads, reduce maintenance costs, and minimizes gravel from being deposited into the city storm sewer system, and also reduce maintenance costs for that. With landscaping, we note some of the benefits are the same, such as approved aesthetics. The landscaping partially screens some elements of the development from adjacent and surrounding properties. In this case, that's the parking lot. Storm warning management is also another consideration. In this case, the trees and the shrubs and the grass and everything, they soak up the rainwater before it runs off onto the property and onto adjacent roadways and then into the storm sewer. The site-specific benefits, in this case, the landscaping would help mitigate the visual impacts to adjacent and surrounding property owners. And we note that for this property, there exist, there actually existed two dwellings on both the lots that comprise the parking lot today. Those dwellings were demolished, as well as a complete front and rear yard as part of those properties. All that was demolished and taken away to accommodate the proposed, the subject parking lot. So the landscaping would help screen and would help bring back some of those landscaping elements that were on the property before the former dwellings were demolished. And the landscaping of the city boulevard is consistent with the South Avondale Area Redevelopment Plan. We call that the SERP. And deferring landscaping until 2022, five years from now, while the parking lot is being used, would simply be inconsistent with the SERP. So again, this is the site in blue. This is the existing Cairn building, and this is the parking lot that was first developed. The parking lot that we're talking about tonight is highlighted in green, and the commenting boxes are pointing towards the parking lot. This is an air photo taken from 2014, and it shows the two dwellings with the landscaping that comprised those two properties back in 2014, before the parking lot was developed in late 2015. For the extension request, administration considers that granting an extension until 2022 for the completion of the required hard surfacing and landscaping works is excessive. Administration is also concerned about the perception that would be created among the development community in the city if these requests, if this request was granted. Therefore, administration recommends that the extension is granted until July 31st, 2018. And if the hard surfacing and landscaping works are not completed by July 31st, 2018, administration requests a council's direction to issue a stop order to cease the first, to cease use of the first floor commercial units, and until the landscaping and paving works are complete, and also a $1,000 fine. As for the reduction in parking stalls, the applicant requests to remove four parking stalls from this parking lot. That would reduce the parking from 69 stalls to 65 stalls. Sorry, there's a typo there. That nine should be turned upside down to read 65 parking stalls. So 69 parking stalls to 65 parking stalls. The unique circumstances with this subject development related to parking, because there is an affordable housing component, our lower vehicle ownership, proximity to the downtown, proximity to transit, bicycle and scooter storage. All those unique circumstances are taken into account when this development permit was evaluated. And when it was evaluated, administration considered that 69 stalls is adequate for the various uses on the property. A reduction in the number of parking stalls has the potential to compromise the ability of this development to accommodate the parking, the current parking needs on the site in addition to the future parking needs once all the commercial and institutional uses on the first story are occupied. Therefore, administration denies that the applicant's request to remove four parking stalls from the approved site plan. In terms of stakeholder engagement, in advance of council's consideration tonight, notifications of this public hearing were sent to adjacent landowners, persons who submitted a letter of concern, persons who signed a petition, persons who attended a previous council meeting regarding this development permit. And this process is the same process that was taken for this development permit the last time it appeared at council, and that was on October 17th, 2016. So we recommend that city council, as development authority for this development permit, amend conditions six, eight, and 10 to require completion of hard surfacing, curbing, and line painting for the parking lot, as well as landscaping works by no later than July 31st, 2018. We also recommend a fine of $250 on the applicant for noncompliance with the conditions of this development permit to be paid by no later than December 31st, 2017. And we recommend that the applicant's request to remove four parking stalls from the approved site plan be denied. And lastly, we direct them, we recommend that council's direct administration to issue a stop order, including a second offense fine of $1,000, and cease commercial uses approved under this development permit. Specifically, those commercial uses are health facilities, minor, retail store, convenience, if the required hard surfacing, curbing, and line painting of the parking lot and the landscaping works are not completed by July 31st, 2018. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much Ms. Ellis. Before we get to public comment, I'd just ask council if there are any questions for administration at this stage. And we'll have an opportunity to do that before we close as well. But are there any questions for administration at this stage? Don't see anybody. Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very much Mayor Given. Just to administration, have you been in conversation with the mister, the manager or the owner of the building during the whole process?
Ms. Ellis?
Thank you. Through Mayor Given, Counselor O'Toole, yes, we've been in contact with Mr. Cameron, the owner and the applicant several times throughout the summer and even before, leading up to the summer.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks Counselor O'Toole. Any other questions for administration at this stage? Seeing none, then we will open up for public comment. In getting started, I will first call for anybody in favor of the development, sorry, speaking in support of the development permit. And then I will call for anybody speaking in opposition to the development permit, and we'll ask everyone to keep their presentations to no more than five minutes. And if your intent is to support something that someone else has said, we'd ask you to sort of identify that and maybe consider not using your full five minutes to say something that somebody else already said. Is that fair enough? Fair enough and easily understood ground rules? If it is, then I will call for anybody that wishes to speak in support of the development permit, PL 160252. Is anybody who wishes to speak in support of the development permit? As we did with the public hearing, if you just come forward, identify yourself and state your name for counseling our recording secretary, and I guess we've got a sign and sheet. That's new. And you could consider doing that at the end of your comments, but welcome.
Thank you Mayor Given. My name is Jared. I'm here as a supporter to the development permit extension, I suppose. Even I'm struggling with the, supporting what side?
The pieces of it?
Or the permit or the recommendations, but supporting the Cairns' extension application in any case. I read through the recommendations, and Ms. Ellis's report is very comprehensive and often persuading. There's some really key elements to, I think, this debate and I think why we keep talking about it, as opposed to making a rushed decision. There's two pieces. Other than talking about Brad's project and what he's achieved in building the Cairn around building intentional community for people who struggle to maintain housing in our community. That's been incredible. I've supported many people who've lived on the property. I've dropped off donations there, harassed people on-site, that sort of thing. Over the last couple of years, I've also gotten to know folks who access the medical care that ACT Medical provides as well, which is a facility in the commercial level of Cairn. So when I look at the recommendations put together by administration, there's two components that I think are cause for a little bit more conversation. One was around social impact. So again, I don't have a ton of experience with the reports, and generally my experience with them is that they tend to be very comprehensive. But what I thought was missing there, whether it's supposed to be in the report or not, is the social impact of, I guess, threatening the stability of the medical services that are maintained on the main floor at the Cairn, which is most notably the methadone and suboxone accessibility that's available there. Prior to Alberta Health Services implementing their own methadone and suboxone, which are two medications that were not available very much in our community up until ACT Medical started. Sorry, so prior to Alberta Health Services starting their program, ACT Medical was a tenant at Cairn, really saving lives, turning the tide in the opioid epidemic and its ravages on Grand Prairie. And so that hit me probably in the most real way to say that a discussion over a parking lot, which the report shows has been costly up to this point, even this discussion and developing reports and spending time having this talk again and again. But to threaten the stability of a needed service for the sake of aesthetic or parking lot is really missing the point. So that's one piece of why I would support extending time limits in this case. There's needed medical services available at the Cairn that honestly were welcome in that building because of the community that was built there and some of the concessions that were made in terms of what life at the Cairn was going to look like and what it was going to support. The other is this, it's likely, meritus, sorry, it's likely meritus that, well, if this particular developer is given leeway or shown favor or leniency, that other developers might ask for the same thing. And again, not being a permit expert, I would say if any developer is interested in transforming the lives of individuals who struggle with homelessness or individuals who are trying to fight their life back from addiction and want to provide a space to do that, as well as build a pretty awesome-looking building, maybe they should deserve those concessions as well. So if we actually had droves of socially-minded developers looking at building apartment buildings that might change neighborhoods for the better, yeah, I think we should sign them up for as many extensions as they might need to complete the permit requirements as well. If you're building another, whatever it might be, that doesn't achieve these loftier social goals, I don't think it costs anything to say no, complete your parking lot on time. I'm going to sign this sheet unless there's questions.
Jared, thanks.
This is at the end of a long day, sorry.
Well, thanks very much Mr. Gossen. Thanks for being here. I do see a question from Counselor Clayton.
Thank you Mayor Given. Thank you for coming tonight. I appreciate you coming up to speak. Obviously, you have a lot of passion for this facility and appreciate what it provides to our community. I'm curious, in a short phrase, I'm having a hard time struggling why you support the extension. Although I see the high-level sort of thought in regards to supporting the project, but excuse me, I seem to be missing something on why you support an extension.
Mr. Gossen?
I support a reasonable extension because I think, I don't think, I think the developer has made it clear that this deadline isn't going to work in terms of meeting the recommendations of the permit. So if that threatens the livelihood of the program, that's troublesome. But a reasonable extension, I think, should be considered.
Okay, thanks Mr. Gossen. Any other questions? I don't see anybody, so here's your opportunity to sign that sheet. Was there anybody else that wished to come forward to speak in support of the request? Okay, let's see our next speaker making their way. And maybe Jared, if you could, if you want to take that with you, maybe back towards the community living desk. That way, anybody that wants to come up and speak could just record their name prior to coming in and coming up to the front as we implement a new process on the fly. Thank you. Welcome if you'd. Yeah, thanks. Thanks very much for coming. If you'd introduce yourselves.
Good evening Mayor Given and council. My name is Judy Karastis, and I'm here today to speak on behalf of the Cairn. I am not a resident of the Cairn, but as Brad's partner have been a part of facilitating Brad's vision of creating an inclusive and supportive community for those who are most vulnerable within Grand Prairie. We have been on this road for the past 10 years. You will hear directly from Brad with regards to the financial impact and policies regarding the parking lot in question, of which I'm also part-owner. I'm here today because this issue has come up time and time again due to the recent reevaluation by city administration as they have a different opinion than past administration who approved the Cairn parking with a total of 40 parking stalls on August 25th, 2010. Although I have wanted to speak to council previously, I felt that Brad respectfully covered the required information that city council needed, and city council has been very supportive throughout this process. This time, however, I would like to voice some concerns regarding city administration and also bring some insight into the human side of this conversation. As per the city's website, the following have been identified as the most vulnerable groups within Grand Prairie who experience homelessness. Aboriginals, youth going out of foster, aging out of foster care, single parents, families living in poverty, newcomers to Grand Prairie, people impacted by family violence, seniors, active substance users, individuals with mental illness and chronic physical health conditions. Behind me here today are a number of residents who represent this diverse group who we are proud to be, and we are proud to be a part of their community. Again, I refer to the city website. It takes a community to end homelessness. This is the title of the 2017 report on ending homelessness as per the city of Grand Prairie. I'm again very proud to say that the Cairn is exactly that. An amazing vibrant community whose members support each other day to day. They help each other carry groceries. They drive those who don't have vehicles to appointments. They celebrate birthdays and holidays and other milestones such as days or years drug-free, births, deaths, funerals, and the list goes on. There are a number of scheduled free activities which everyone is invited to, such as community dinners, bingo nights, movie nights, yoga. These are all supported and carried out by residents of the Cairn. Many of these people have not only found a safe and supportive community, but a sense of family, belonging, and purpose. This was only possible because Brad spent three years researching what the best model would be for affordable housing. This was entirely self-funded, and often our holidays included at least a tour or two of such developments throughout Western Canada. He was one of the first housing first landlords in Grand Prairie, and the province recognized him for his dedication by choosing the Cairn and awarding $5.4 million towards its construction. Although neither of us was experienced in this area, we felt this was a vision worth completion. We asked for guidance and help from experts in the areas of construction, finance, property management, and trusted city administrators to tell us what was required of us. And that is what we followed, the recommendation of city administration at the time. The people, the people whose job it was to give us information within city of Grand Prairie guidelines and policies. We're here again today because current administration does not agree with decisions made by past administration. This process has caused a tremendous amount of stress, energy, and money for both Brad and myself and has impacted on how we can further support residents of the Cairn. The decisions council makes today is not only about policy and money, it is about people. It will directly affect 140 people who have built real homes in the community within the Cairn. One of my most special memories is of when we were getting ready for the opening of the first two residential floors. I was taking all the plastic off the new appliances, dressed in work clothes, when a lady by the name of Charity came into her bachelor suite with her social worker. I will never forget the look on her face as she said, "Oh, my God, I can't believe I get to live here." I was very overwhelmed with her genuine appreciation of her new home. This is what all the hard work was for. And most of you know, all the units, whether market or affordable, are finished the same way. There is no differentiation. Another resident who moved in a little while later had a long life on the streets and would often tell stories about how she had to fight over her dumpster. And there are countless more stories such as this. Safe homes, a community, and friendships have been built in the Cairn. In addition to the residential floors, there is a commercial floor where there are psychologists providing mental health services, an addictions clinic, and a full-service pharmacy providing methadone and suboxone to over 50 people. This was the first such pharmacy here in Grand Prairie. As we have all probably heard on the news, time and time again, there's a huge opioid crisis. And Jared already covered some of this, so maybe I'll just skip through. So this is one of the questions I've come here to ask, leading from this point. Since when is it acceptable policy for city administration to repeatedly threaten to close such essential services as an addictions clinic, a full-service pharmacy, and mental health workers to impose their decisions? Is this how this department supports the mandate to end homelessness in our city? As a taxpayer and as a reasonable person, this is mind boggling to me. Why is administration not constructively facilitating a solution? Why punish an individual who has had the perseverance and dedication, as I said, for over 10 years to do something truly meaningful in our community? In addition to Brad's dedication and entire financial resources, I am also heavily invested in the success of the Cairn. I own one of the lots that is being required to be a parking lot, an investment of $200,000 for a single mom whose income would allow me to be a resident of the building in an affordable unit. Not to mention Brad's parents, who not only invested more than $300,000 of their retirement money, but have been here many times working tirelessly for free, building parking standards and one-of-a-kind bike storage area and a smoking shelter. They're not residents of Grand Prairie, yet they support what the Cairn stands for. People run out of the building to greet them as mom and dad when they are here in Grand Prairie. The Cairn is a landmark in Grand Prairie and a model that the province is using as a new standard for affordable housing. You might recognize a similarity with the new CMHA building. The Cairn is a building and a place that shows respect and dignity for the community and all its members. We have strived to stand by our mandate. I propose city administration to reexamine their policies and perhaps review their own mandate with regards to housing and homelessness. I quote again, "It takes a community to end homelessness." In this most recent report provided by administration, they state that they have spent approximately $37,000 to figure out where to plant trees to please a handful of people in the neighborhood and basically how to punish Brad for not having paved a parking lot. It upsets me that my tax dollars and the $144,000 of taxes that the Cairn pays into taxes to the city has gone towards this task that has had zero positive impact on the neighborhood and the people in it. Perhaps the better focus could have been to address a very real challenge of simply not having money available for paving a parking lot than in reality may not even be necessary.
I'm going to ask you to finish up.
I'm almost done. We have had a very poor economy in the past two years and rents have been approximately $200 per unit below the affordable rents agreed upon within the province, with the province and the city. Under these conditions, not only is there no extra money, but we are in fact personally subsidizing the operations of the Cairn. There is no more money from banks, family, or friends. We have exhausted all options and are now facing possible fines and closure as proposed by administration. How can this possibly be a recommendation by a department in the city that is fully aware of the purpose and function of the Cairn? As I said, as the city said, it takes a community to end homelessness. Thank you for your attention and your consideration.
Any questions for the delegation? Counselor Friesen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Thank you for your very heartfelt presentation. I appreciate your passion. I appreciate Mr. Cameron's tenacity and yours in developing this. And it is a much-needed building in Grand Prairie. I particularly appreciate that it is a mixed-income building. I think that's an excellent model. You stated in your presentation that you're here because current administration does not agree with past administration. Am I to understand from that that there is something that has materially changed? Is it the 40-stall requirement up to a 69-stall requirement that suddenly makes it all cost prohibitive for you?
Exactly, exactly. And I guess the other piece of it is we purchased those properties with the intention of perhaps doing another affordable housing type construction and possibly having additional parking if required for the Cairn. This was before we were asked to again go through this development permit process. So the city actually had no knowledge of the fact that we own those properties. So it's basically kind of dumb luck that we do own those properties and we're able to say, well, I guess we can use it for parking if required. However, at the initial, when the initial development permit was issued in 2010, those parking stalls were not required. So they were never budgeted for and never planned for. And yeah, it's been excessively expensive, so.
So what's the cost differential between the 40 stalls that would have been manageable and the 69 that are not? What's the?
The 40 stalls are actually, Brad would be able to address this better because he's much better with the different policies and the changes in the zoning. I think part of the, my understanding is that part of the difference is that street parking was allowed to be used towards these numbers in the initial assessment, in the initial development permit. Whereas now, that is not allowed in this new zoning. So that changed. And the actual cost of the lots that are in question, I think, total about $350,000. Thank you.
Counselor Plot?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Thanks for that, Judy. It was a very heartfelt presentation and obviously you put some thought into that. I guess to go to Counselor Friesen's things, so the 40 stalls were approved at one point or?
Yes.
Hypothetically, they were?
Yes, that was what was recommended by city administration at the time.
And that's currently what's paved on the, I guess, behind the building to the, to the south side?
And includes street parking in front and beside the building, yeah.
And just for clarification, I drove by this property lots of times trying to look at this parking lot, trying to get my head around it. But what I haven't done is drove down the alley. Is the alley paved or gravel?
The alley within our parking lot is paved. The rest of it is not.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Plot. Any other questions to the delegation? Counselor Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm just trying to understand the timeline of this. At what point was the, were the stalls up, the requirement for stalls upped?
You know, actually Brad would be able to answer this question better than I would.
I'll save that question.
So yeah, that would be great, thank you.
I just want to thank you for your investment and time and capital and it is an important project.
Thank you. It's a, it's an amazing community. So, and the people behind me represent that community.
Thanks very much, Ms. Karastis. I don't see anybody else in the queue for the questions. Thank you very much for being here this evening.
Thank you for listening.
Is there anybody else that wished to speak in support of the application? Is there anybody else that wished to speak in support of the application? Come down and introduce yourself for new council. Mr. Cameron?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm Brad Cameron. I'm the owner of the Cairn and you've heard some rather nice things, which I obviously appreciate. I do have to apologize. Matt and you had a good question there. Kevin, Matt and I have communicated quite frequently. Unfortunately, I did, I did miss part of the deadline to get some of this information into your packages. So that's probably where your question came from. That being said, it actually, I feel as though it turned out quite well because I started reading through some of administration's report and there's a lot of information there, obviously. But I do think there are a couple of items that I would like to expand on. And then, yeah, the other thing was I actually ended up talking to some of the residents about what they would want to see on that property and I'll, I'll cover that towards the end. I did print out some information for all of you and I will try to go through it as quickly as possible. Can I?
Just maybe start with Counselor Thies and we can hand them around.
So as Judy had mentioned, council has always been incredibly supportive of the Cairn and I really appreciate that more than, more than you can imagine. Obviously, we ran through that report. So many of you are new to this council and I also feel that some of the existing counselors actually are not familiar with the entire background. And I know you want this to be quick, but I believe this is quite important, some of this information. And I, when I look around the room, there are only three of us here when this started. So anyway, a few of the numbers I wanted to share in detail. So personally, I've been responsible for bringing $6.3 million of provincial money into the city of Grand Prairie. 2009, I was granted $5.4 million from the Housing for the Homeless grants towards the Cairn and more recently received $700,000 to provide support, support services to vulnerable people in the Cairn, which the YMCA made use of. Unfortunately, in 2010, after we received the $5.4 million, the economy had really gone down and the banks no longer were satisfied with that amount of money. Luckily, city council actually granted the Cairn another $400,000 of provincial funds that had been allocated for affordable housing. Later, another affordable housing project in the city unfortunately didn't go forward and another $1 million came available and that was the tipping point that allowed us to go forward with the banks. The actual, the funds that we've received specifically from the city are approximately $5,000 and that was through crime prevention grants. The other funds are provincial funds that we either received directly or were allocated to us through city council, which we greatly appreciate. The city also waived approximately $142,000 in development fees, which of course is a, is a huge amount. Since we're talking numbers, I also wanted to just clarify, before the building was in place, there's maybe 15 people lived in those areas and we paid approximately $6,000 a year in taxes. Now about 140 people live in there and we pay over $140,000 a year in taxes. So from the city perspective, I would suggest this is a pretty good deal. And the best part of it is we're doing good in our community. So despite city council, all the support from city council, going through the construction process, we actually had five different city building inspectors and they all seemed to have different points of view on things. Just, I don't know if we can put that up there, but it is also a part of your package appendix for that Matt provided.
Mr. Cameron, I'll just get you to flip that around. It's upside down.
Oh, sorry. It's right side up this way now too. That's good. So anyway, we went through five different building inspectors. When we very first submitted it, the first building inspector liked, liked what we had. Unfortunately, he was ill or ended up leaving. We had a different building inspector and then another and another and another. And often they contradicted one another. Number one is the exterior finish. One of the building inspectors required us to put cement board on the outside of the Cairn building. The Cairn building is minimum eight inches thick of cement with a styrofoam insulation on the inside and the outside. I can actually bring out the building code. That was his interpretation. That cost $515,000 more than the Cairn was originally budgeted for and than we had with the original inspector. Another one was the way that the air handling is done. That was another $72,000. Third one was to fire rate the trusses. This is an interesting one. Most residential buildings have a one-hour fire rating between units and between floors. Because we had a commercial space, they said we needed a two-hour fire rating, which absolutely makes sense. Between the commercial floor and the first residential floor, of course, you would want a longer fire rating. They actually said that we would have to have that two-hour fire rating throughout. So between the fourth floor and the fifth floor, we also had to have a two-hour fire rating. The difference in cost was $147,000 for that. One building inspector said we needed a steel staircase, so that's what we put in. The next building inspector said I wouldn't have required that because it's covered in drywall, so it would have been fine for me. That was $125,000. The last one is actually in relation to two-by-fours. So wood two-by-fours versus metal two-by-four. So there's actually not a huge difference in cost. But if you use the metal two-by-fours, you have to use wire that's jacketed in metal. So that was another $35,000. So between the start of the project, based on very experienced engineers and architects' recommendations to the end of construction, building inspectors' opinions or interpretations added $939,000 to the price of the Cairn. So you might wonder where that million dollars came from because you can't just get that out of thin air. Through the project, we had incredible support from many of our suppliers, Inland Cement, Magnum Electric, Tile Ideal, and our architects and engineers and others. Everyone who touched the Cairn was committed to it and understood the change it could have in our community. The builders, Enter Construction, carried that $1 million interest-free for the Cairn. Who else would do that? Like, carry that interest-free to make a difference in our community? Consequently, there's a plaque honoring this Enter family at the front of our building. Anyway, if we jump back to the administrative report, page one near the bottom, it refers to development permit D10-0516 was approved by Public Works. At that point, the approvals could happen at the committee level because it was a mixed-use district, not a direct control district. This is, this is also in your package and it kind of shows you what was approved August 25, 2010. This will address some of the questions that you had for Judy. So at this point in time, it was the MX district. MX was a really cool district. They allowed you to have count your on-street parking. They also allowed you a 50% reduction in the commercial parking required. So if you look at the calculated parking requirements, there, the calculation when this was submitted, there was seven stalls for commercial, which is the equivalent of 14. There are seven stalls for essential public service, 13 affordable housing, 13 for visitor parking, which is the total of 40 that were required. And if you count, we actually have 42 stalls there. Well, 41 because there's a tree in, in one of them now. So that's where, that's where that came from. Oh, and then also, if we have a look, all of the uses currently in the commercial space of the Cairn were permitted uses in the MX zoning. Before we get to page two- Before we get to page two, I want to share the City Council agenda for December 14th, 2015. Interestingly enough, Counselor Friesen spoke before me at that meeting. So I was asked by the city to go through the process of transitioning the zoning from MX to DC 14. In general, the city wanted to get rid of the MX district because there, it was only in a couple of places in the city and it didn't really seem to make sense. The last sentence of administration's report says, "The proposed land use bylaw amendments also provide for concurrent redistricting of lands proposed to provide additional parking for the existing Karen development." So I, I thought that was important because I saw it as additional. Due to obviously some of my struggles with various administration groups, not just planning, I actually shared my concerns with Mayor Given and, and we had a little discussion about it. And we agreed it was important to make this transition for the land use bylaw. And we thought that the process would likely go relatively smoothly. Unfortunately, almost two years later now, we're discussing the same topic or a piece of that same topic. I'd like to highlight some of the items from administrative's report on May 16th, 2016. Here they talk about no specific commercial uses being identified. The new development officers feel that additional parking is required over what was calculated by the original officers. They feel like because there wasn't a use in place, that that constituted a change of use. So it's kind of troubling because if we hadn't acquired those additional parking lots, would we have just left that space empty forever? Like I don't, I don't understand how that, how that's even possible. So I felt quite strongly about this and I actually got lawyers involved. The outcome of that is I don't have enough money to fight with the city. So Development Services believes that putting a previously permitted commercial use into a commercial space constitutes a change of use. Therefore, Development Services can reevaluate the whole building. So what would happen if Judy got frustrated and didn't let us use her parking area, right? What are, what are we going to do then? Just empty the whole commercial floor? The nice thing about the DC 14 though, is you as council have the authority to choose to do whatever you see fit, which is why I'm sharing a little additional information. On page 22, I have all of these documents or you can look them up. But on page 22 of the May 2016 report says, "According to the information on file, the building on the property known as the Karen was constructed in 2011. Previous development permit approvals for the subject properties reasonably addressed the residential component of the development as well as the adjacent parking lot, but did not adequately address the use of the ground floor commercial space." I disagree with that and I disagreed with it at the time. There were, as I mentioned, the equivalent of 14 stalls made available for commercial use when originally developed. Also, you may want to recognize that less than two blocks away from the Karen, there are no parking requirements in the downtown core. People, there's no parking requirements at all. As part of the May 2016 report, there's a letter from me saying that I would include 40 additional parking stalls, although I also highlighted that the maximum number of stalls that I thought might be required at the busiest time was 20. After that part of the meeting, we had a very long discussion about how many trees we should have in the parking lot. So after recently discussing the situation with a number of people, I came to a couple of conclusions. First was that I have no idea when I may have enough money to pave the parking lot. So I asked for a five-year window rather than coming back next year and having the same conversation because it actually costs $500 to come and discuss this with you tonight. The second was that I don't believe the lot really needs to be paved. You talked about how at the Community Growth Committee, they discussed how mud and gravel being deposited onto adjacent roadways and potentially into storm sewers could be expensive. We had the largest rainfall in recent history. We literally had fences floating down our back alley and nothing happened to our hard-packed lot. There weren't ruts. There, we weren't missing big chunks of it. Granted, some rocks probably left, but there, it wasn't like a big change in it. Another item that was suggested to me was that I take a number of photos on different days at different times to show the area so that you guys would have an idea of how much parking is there, how much parking is required, how many people are there. There's an awful lot of photographs and those packages I passed around. But if you look in every single photograph, there's a parking stall immediately beside the Karen. On every side of the building, at every time of day, every day of the week that I took the photos for. So I actually would suggest that we maybe don't need any additional parking at this point in time. So.
Mr. Cameron, I'll ask you to conclude and try to be, and appreciate you've got a lot that you wanted to cover.
Pretty close, yeah. So I started to ask some of the tenants and commercial users if they thought we needed additional parking. And the answer was either it would be nice, but not required or not at all. When I showed them the current plan, they were actually quite frustrated at the amount of money that we would spend on trees. And they actually suggested they'd rather have a community garden. Of course, I'd like to do that, but I also would like to incorporate some additional parking. I do want to refer to the current report to council, the analysis, the Karen was originally approved with the 40 parking stalls. And then I would actually like to complete the landscaping and Matt and I met on site with Lindsay Juniper and other people and, and they said the same thing as they discussed about the four trees that I did plant. If I did any of the landscaping prior to the hard surfacing, it would just die and it, and it wasn't in place. So I would actually, I've actually paid for a significant part of the landscaping already to the contractor. I would like to complete the landscaping, but then leave the hard surfacing till some point in the future. I recognize that the landscaping would make the area look quite a bit better. It also discusses the grassy area and I'm, you could clarify, but I believe that I was putting washed rock everywhere similar to around the rest of the Karen. If council really wants grass, I, I could absolutely do that. They talked about the relationship to City Council's strategic priorities and it says there are none. I would suggest that affordable housing, counseling, addiction, specialized medical clinic and full-service pharmacy should be a part of our priorities. The environmental impact, the parking lot was perfect after the big rainfall. Social impact, they suggested that there was considerable opposition from residents of the surrounding neighborhood. There are literally four people here. One person wasn't 100% sure why they were here and the other three actually had information they wanted to share. If you want to talk considerable numbers, 140 people live in the Karen. The other thing is I really appreciate that administration chose to highlight that $37,000 were paid out in wages. If you compare that to the amount of wages paid out by the Karen for the last two years, it's zero. But you can imagine the amount of work I've probably had to do in relation to their $37,000 worth of work. I keep having to revisit the zoning, the different building inspectors, the different development officers. Over the course of the project, we've had five different building inspectors and five different development officers involved in the process. Yeah. So, oh, and you asked about the proposed parking area? The amount that the proposed parking area is costing is $655,000. And that was not a part of the original project. So if you look at the amount that decisions that were made from the start of the project to this point, we've added $1.6 million to the cost of the Karen. So when people wonder why I don't have money to pave the parking lot, that's, that's exactly why. And the decisions you make, they will have a direct effect on the people that live in the building, not just on my pocketbook. One very interesting thing that came up when I talked to the people in the building. This is like the important part, sorry. Can I steal your package, Chris? You keep the good part of the package? No, the one, the couple.
I don't think any of our packages have layouts. So maybe at the end, sorry, the very last page, last couple pages.
So in an effort to address both administration's requirement of having the 37 parking stalls, actually, and as well to try to have an area that doesn't look as much like a parking area. I have another plan, which is a little bit different and I understand if this isn't enough time to discuss it. So this particular layout would allow us to have the 37 parking stalls that were discussed previously. However, if you feel as though perhaps the 40 parking stalls that were a part of the original development would be sufficient, then I would suggest we consider using what the Karen residents would like to see, which would be approximately 20 to 21 additional stalls and an area in the middle to have some garden area and recreation space.
Mr. Cameron, is that your presentation?
That's it, yeah.
Thank you. I see Counselor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Thanks for the presentation, Brad. The pictures that you've got here from December, it looks like a period here. My question is, was the Karen building 100% occupied at that time?
The Karen is 100% occupied. The commercial space has approximately 600 square feet left out of 8,000.
Okay, so the building is pretty close to 100%.
Practically full, yeah.
And I mean, I can appreciate you took a kind of snapshot in time. For, well, not period, but is, would this be consistent from, in your opinion, from what's been like for parking, for ground-level parking and street-level parkings?
I actually think that the situation might be better because there's a few areas around the Karen where you can't park right now just due to some of the windows that are, that are along that area. So I, I actually believe the situation's better than, than that. And, and honestly, I was surprised when I started looking at the different times, the different days. The situation was much better than, than what I had even thought, so.
Thank you.
Counselor Plott, Counselor Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Thank you, Brad, for all of the information you've provided for us tonight. I, I think that you've given us some adequate background to understand your challenges better. If we were looking for some kind of compromise and looking at your five-year timeframe, are there things within the required improvements that you would be able to do sooner than the five years?
So as I said, I'd, I'd very much like to do the landscaping. I think it would really make the neighborhood, you know, look the way it's supposed to. But I, I can't afford to do the, I can't afford to do the paving, so. But at the same time, I'm not sure that that's necessarily required long-term. I know that that's a regular land use bylaw requirement, but I'd like you guys to challenge that and see if you might consider an exception to that or an exception to that as long as we're using it as a garden or, or, yeah.
If, if you were to just do the landscaping, then how long do you think you would need to be able to do that?
It would have been done already. So I, I believe it would be done next summer. So by the end of July, the landscaping would be complete.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Blackburn. Counselor Resi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. One thing I'm trying to understand is the impact a potential stop order could have on the community as Mr. Gosson alluded to. Could you, how many organizations or businesses are, are in the building in addition to the residential?
So there's two different counseling services and then Act Medical, which is a medical clinic. They specifically work with people trying to recover from addictions. And then there's also the full-service pharmacy. So yeah, the stop work would affect approximately 10 counselors and, yeah. And the doctors and all the people that come there for medications daily. They have to come daily. So even like a hiccup of a couple of days is a big deal for them.
Excellent. Thank you.
Counselor Resi, Counselor Plott.
Sorry, I did have one other question from, for, you had referred to potentially these, these other lots that were, that had houses on them at earlier time, maybe being used for something else. Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
So I didn't bring the drawings, but before we were going to use it as a parking lot, we actually have a really nice layout of some townhomes that are two-bedroom, they're all concrete, just like similar to the Karen, which I, I think is a positive, but not everyone agrees with me. And they would go along the front of the street and then behind, there would be additional parking there beyond what would be required for those new townhouses. So my intent was always to be able to add some additional parking. But with those townhomes along the front, then you would never see that additional parking. It would just look nice, right? And the townhomes would also have, in theory, front attached garages. So the people who live in the townhomes would have their parking available at the front of the building and the Karen people could still make use of the back of the building. Of course, that's like, you know, I can't afford a parking lot, so I probably, it would be years before I could do that. But it would also be unfortunate to just turn it into a parking lot if, if it's not required.
So maybe a question for me, I'm not sure the process on this, but I'm not. If the parking lot wasn't required at all from the city's perspective and there was an opportunity to put more densification on that site, I would think that'd be a good revenue source or a good thing for the, for us. But is, I'm not sure how the process would work today as far as saying, you know, do we even need the parking? Like, you know, we're motioning on, on this or not, but is there an opportunity to speak to whether the parking's even required or, or not?
Yeah. And so in terms of process tonight, there's a number of people that came and would like to speak to the sort of the subject matter in front of us and we'll make sure that those that came tonight have an opportunity to speak. After hearing everybody that came to speak, then council can have a bit of a discussion and maybe a bit of a discussion with administration on what options are available to us in terms of decision-making. I don't at all believe that there's a requirement to make a decision here tonight if council needs more information or more alternatives. I believe within the context of a development permit, we have the ability to request administration do those kind of things. But we can have a bit of a caucus with administration after we've had a chance to hear from anybody that came to present tonight.
Okay, thanks for the conversation. Thanks, Brad.
Thanks very much, Mr. Cameron. So just referencing that we want to make sure that anybody that came here tonight to speak has an opportunity. I'll ask if there's anybody else that wishes to come forward in support of the application. Is there anybody else that wishes to come forward? Welcome. You've seen the process a couple of times now and so just ask you to introduce yourself and if you can, please try not to tread over any ground that's been previously covered.
Thank you, Mayor Given and Council. My name is Tyler Savard, as many of you know me. So being up, I would definitely encourage you to really keep all aspects of how the impact of the Karen has had on our community. And it's not just a physical building. It's not just a parking lot. It's had a very positive impact on our community. And if it is coming to the point of where it is considering the whole cease and stop work kind of thing happening, the impact that that would have on our community would be absolutely devastating. We already know that we have been four years top running for per capita for opiate overdoses and that has not stopped. That has not changed whatsoever, but the Act Medical and the Karen and all the services are happening in the commercial portion of that building have been a huge positive on that or on the opiate epidemic. We didn't have anything until Act Medical came to our community and I know for my family, many others as well. That has been what saved my child's life. And so I definitely strongly encourage, we can't take anymore as a community, any more losses we've had in the last two weeks from just one, just from HIV North, not only, you know, our emergency rooms and everyone else that's affected by it, but we, you know, we've had over 20 overdoses that have happened just in the last two weeks. Hundreds of naloxone kits have been handed out. So this is a huge, huge impact that this building has had on our community as far as people being able to reach out and to get help. And we don't have enough of that help happening already in our community and we need to definitely take it to the next level. So if there are. So, if there are, the Karen building has, has been a huge positive in that aspect of the, the social aspect of it. So, it's not just a building. It's not just a parking lot. It certainly has a social impact that we have to definitely keep in, keep in mind when we are concerned with what we are happening there. So, definitely encourage council to please work with Mr. Cameron. He's, you know, as an, as an individual in our community, brought that, brought that component to our community, and it's definitely been lifesaving, literally, in so many different ways.
Okay, thanks very much, Ms. Savard. Any questions for the delegation? Seeing none. Thank you very much for being here this evening. I'll ask again, was there anybody else that wishes to come forward to speak in support of the application? Welcome. See, once again, you've certainly seen the process. If you'll be so kind, is it, is it, have a seat and introduce yourself for, for council and welcome.
I am Judy, and I live at the Karen building and where I work, I, it's, it's amazing. The place really is, and they're so supportive. And some people that I've seen where I work have come in there and they're moved in there, and they're just, they got a home. And then we have like bingo nights and suppers once. Month beds. What's so exciting is there's a few guys in there and they're just amazing, and they're seniors and they're, they're struggling, you know, but they have a home. They do. We always get together and then one of the guys we hadn't seen in a couple of days, we actually went to check on him and, like Brad said, you know, like we're thinking, we just decorated the trees and there was two families down there with three kids, and the kids were having a great time. The moms got to know each other. One of them came from a bad situation, you know, and just watching a couple of the seniors people there, they have no, they have nobody, you know, and one of them was by the tree playing with the kids and, you know, just having like a really good time, you know, and it's just, you know, if we get, we don't, I don't think we need a parking lot, you know, we need a place where, like, what Brad, what do you guys want to? But for me, I, what I see is what we need at the Karen building, we have all this love inside of that building, a family, like I was almost homeless when I went in there and I'm just, I wasn't homeless, but, and this isn't therapy, but I found the Karen building and I'm finally grounded with a home and, you know? And what I want to do, and I said, having that playground, you know, why have an empty place? Like a parking lot where you can park vehicles is material. We have all this love inside of the building that needs to go outside too with the families and the people. And even planting a garden, like it's such low income, like some people think a garden. Well, yeah, some people can't afford carrots. They can't afford, you know, fresh vegetables. And just getting out there and being together and being in the dirt, growing your own garden, you know, and the kids playing and, you know, so if we need a few, a little bit more parking spot, we need it, but why? It's only material. We're talking about kids and people and the mental people, low income. That's more important than a vehicle. We can always catch the bus, right?
Thanks very much for the presentation. Just before you run away and not to scare you off, we'd just like to make sure, was there any questions for the delegation? No? Okay. That's okay. And there's nobody that had any questions for you. Thank you very much. And if you could, anybody that has spoken, if you would just take the time to write down your name for our recording secretary, so if we can make sure that our sign-in sheet gets to the delegations. Was there anybody else here to speak in support of the application?
Hello.
Welcome.
My name's Melissa St. Pierre, and I'm for the extension and I work for Prime Property Management. So, we've been managing the Karen since the get-go, as long as I've been there. And there's just a couple of things that I kind of wanted to point out that I don't think were hit on. Obviously, when I started at Prime in 2015, the economy started to dwindle and property rents significantly dropped and drastically. My parents own Prime Property Management and they told me that this was the worst that they'd ever seen in the 20 years that Prime has been around. With that being said, obviously Brad's anticipated rents were not met. So, he's been kind of dealing with the last two years of having below-normal rents. Recently, as of August, I believe, is when we finally started to have increases and starting to improve. He also had a, you know, odd vacancy rate throughout the whole time I was there, but now we're rocking at 0%, so that's really good. So, I think that's something to also keep in consideration of this extension is that he hasn't had the rates that he was anticipating. The other thing I wanted to mention is that I'm there all the time showing and whatnot. Well, not right now because we don't have anything, but previous, and I never had any issues with parking.
Okay, thanks very much, Ms. St. Pierre. Any questions for the delegation? I don't see anybody ringing in, nobody putting up their hand. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that wishes to come forward to speak in support of the application? Everybody's seen the process now, right? So, you know, introduce yourself and welcome.
Introduce myself? Is, is that working?
Yeah, you bet.
Awesome. So, kind of nervous. Going to take a deep breath.
Just ignore yourself on the screen. That's the thing that throws you off.
It's kind of weird, eh? And I'm like not even making eye contact. Weirdest thing. Yeah, I'm going to consider myself a rock star. So, my name's Ethan Ellis. I'm a resident at the Karen as well as I actually just got a job down in the, in Human Care. I work as a life coach and I wanted to touch on Counselor Plott on, on kind of the parking for a second. And so, when I would park, when I would come home, no matter what, there was always a spot and I lived there. I've been living there for over, over a year now, and every single night, every single day, no matter the time, I'd always come home and there'd be a spot near the building. And I actually sold my car because I couldn't afford to pay rent, pay groceries, all that kind of stuff because I was trying to pursue life coaching, because I have a vision of transforming people's lives as well. And so, I bike and I walk everywhere now. And to live in a place that supports what I want to do and my vision while also supporting his vision for the building and the people in it is, it just means so much. I'm sitting here shaking about, like how much I care about that building, that place and all the support that I've gotten from it, because I wouldn't be where I am today without it. And so, I just want, want you guys to keep in mind, everyone who lives there and everyone who's thankful for the support that the Karen offers and allowing everyone to live and have a home and be able to afford affordable housing and all that kind of stuff, so.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Ellis. Well done. You made it. But first, are there any questions for the delegation? There's probably not, but just in case, want to make sure. Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for being here. Is there anybody else that wishes to come forward to speak in support of the application? I don't see anybody else coming forward. Is there anybody else that wished to speak in opposition to the application? Anybody that wished to speak in opposition of the, to the application? Call one last time. Is there anybody else that wished to speak in opposition to the application? Come on forward. You've seen the, once again, you've seen the process. If you'll introduce yourself, welcome.
Hi, my name is Felicity Perker, and I have property in the neighborhood. And I too am landlord in the city and I provide social housing to low-income people, but I don't ask for concessions all the time, and I guess that's what really annoys me about this. I attended the first council meeting where there was a very lengthy debate with council and the planning department when they came up with a plan that addressed the need for parking in the area, the safety concerns of residents who have children who use the sidewalk and they don't want them to get run over by vehicles, and the need for landscaping to beautify the property. As the land has, as you have seen, has previously been houses with yards. It was approved, the development plan, and after approval, Mr. Cameron quickly set up the businesses and, in the Karen, and, and then there was a time period where nothing was done. One week prior became, before the, the permit was set to expire, the fence at the neighbor's property was completed. That was one week before the permit came up. And nothing has been done since. He was, got an extension for the parking lot and nothing has been done. In October 24th, 2016, Brad Cameron stated, Cameron stated to the Daily Herald Tribune that he had worked with the Community Futures and received funding, received the money needed to get the, the parking lot and landscaping completed, but not by the September 2016 deadline. So, he had the money in his hands. Now, Mr. Cameron wants another extension to the permit. Neighbors there are concerned. We don't believe Mr. Cameron has any intention of following through on parking. It is presently being used as a parking lot until the window was put in front. Cars were driving any which way out onto the street. That doesn't provide safety for children, as was discussed quite a lot in the initial development meeting. I urge council to follow the recommendations of the planning department. I think it sets a Brad, a bad precedent that developers can decide how many parking lots they feel they need in a building. That's the job of the city. Because you, you receive funding, of which Brad Cameron received a considerable amount of money from the city and the province, it does not give him a license to hold that over council and keep coming back for concessions. That's, that's my concern.
Okay, thank you for your presentation, Ms. Perker. Questions for the delegation? And there are a couple here. Counselor Friesen.
Thank you. Thank you for coming down today. Have you, in the neighborhood, noticed, you mentioned the cars going in and out without much time or reason and that certainly being a concern?
It is a concern.
Have you noticed problems with street parking and that sort of thing also, or?
I know there are problems with street parking. The lady who, who lives right next to the Karen, she has had to put out a cone in her yard to prevent people from parking in, in her spot. Parking is always full in front of the building. And Lisa can speak more to the parking issues. She'll be speaking next.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Friesen. Any other questions for the delegation? Is anybody else? Thank you. Counselor Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I appreciate you coming out tonight. Curious, you mentioned that you have rental properties as well. I'm assuming they're in the area.
In all over Grand Prairie.
Okay, so in the areas that you're located, what are sort of some of the situations where you've had minimum parking standards for your rental properties? Where you've had to provide parking stalls based on the number of people living in your accommodations?
I have old houses and they have enough parking, and I ensure that they have parking. So, I'll put parking in the backyard or, or up front. Yeah, they all have parking.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton.
We shouldn't assume that because you're lower income, you don't have a car. A lot of lower-income people do have cars. They have to get to work. It's just they don't have a lot of extra money.
Okay, I don't see anybody else in the queue, although I said that last time. Okay, it looks like really I don't see anybody else. Thank you this time. Thanks very much, Ms. Perker, for being here. Anybody else that wished to come forward to speak in opposition to the application? Welcome. Once again, if you'll introduce yourself for council and our recording secretary, welcome.
Hi, my name is Lisa Cox Jordan.
Please, and please have a seat, Lisa.
First of all, I'd like to make it known that I think it's a bit inappropriate that Kevin O'Toole sits on this meeting tonight. I saw that during his reelection bid a few weeks ago that he had a massive sign right on the Karen property site. So, I live east of the Karen building. I submitted a letter to you, and I hope that you all have had a chance to read it. I also have with me a letter from the residents and homeowners opposing the developers' request to get the five-year extension to pave and landscape the parking lot and get a reduction in the four parking stalls. I have 13 signatures here. Every house that I approached on this block, everyone signed this letter saying that they oppose any extension. I'd also like to point out that many of these people that have signed have lived in this neighborhood for over 20 years.
You can maybe just pass it to Counselor Thieson. We can circulate it and then we'll keep that copy for administration. Thank you.
I feel frustrated that I have to be here tonight. I was here a year and a half ago, May 30th, 2016. I just wonder, how long do we have to look at this eyesore? You know, when, when is this going to end? Will I have to attend another meeting? City planning and development have made some recommendations and one was a $250 fine. This to us is just, it's a joke. It's, it's an insult to the residents who live in this area. You know, waiting at one and a half years for this to be done and it's still not done. Is, is that only worth $250? And also, if city council approves the fine for the $250, what message is it sending to the other developers? And to this developer, he's just going to think, oh, well, delay is fine. There's no consequences. You know, I can get a $250 fine, you know, for speeding or, you know, for just rolling through a stop sign, and that was just, you know, a few seconds of stupidity on my part. But this is like a year and a half that these residents on the block have had to live with this. This developer has no incentives to complete the requirements. This building is already open. In our opinion, the city should never have let the developer open this building because now, without all the conditions being met, it's like giving a child money for an allowance before he's even done his chores. Like, he's just not, he has no incentive to get his work done. We think that there should be a substantial fine in this case. It's the only way that this developer and others will take the city seriously and complete the requirements of development permits. I'd also like to point out that even if this paving and landscaping occurs, the citizens of this neighborhood will have to deal with the drug addicts and those that have mental health issues frequenting our area. No one told us when the Karen building was being proposed that this medical clinic would be introducing an addiction facility. So, we're going to have to live with this problem for many years to come. Some of us may be able to move and sell our houses at a loss. Others, like the seniors that live next to me, the next two houses beside me, they've been there for like 30 years. They're not going to be moving. They just have to put up with what's going on around them. So, in our opinion, and those on that letter, the Karen building has led to a significant deterioration in our established residential neighborhood. In my opinion, Mr. Cameron, the developer, he just takes, takes and takes from us. He just, he won't give anything back, you know? We, we need this parking lot to be paved. We need those trees to be there. We need something back, you know, this, this was a mature, established neighborhood, you know, with the older houses and the big trees that were, you know, over 70 years old, and now we have nothing. We have gravel. I think that the developer is just filling his pockets and he's just not fulfilling his requirements that were set out in a development permit. I think that if you're going to have any extension, you have I think that if you're going to uh have any extension, you have to uh scrutinize his his financial reports. You have to look at his income. You're gonna have to look at what his rental income is versus his utility expenses, because I believe that he has enough money to pave a parking lot. As indicated in my letter to you, I phoned a paving company and they told me it would be thirty-seven thousand dollars to pave that parking lot. Of course, that doesn't include the line painting and those extra details. But still, how much is he making a month? He must be making over a hundred thousand dollars a month and he can't afford this. And this this has been a year and a half. That's all I have to say, I guess, that the residents that live on the street and have lived there for many years, we're just, we're fed up. We need you to to help us, to protect us, I guess. And there was one more thing I was going to mention. The trees that he has planted, they're, well, city planning and development said that they're probably going to die once the paving occurs because of the compaction of the soil. But right now, they're only planted nine feet apart. And if you ask any nursery, Colorado spruce trees should be planted at least twelve feet apart so that they can grow properly and have enough room. If you drive by there, you can see those four trees are just um just squished together, whereas when you look at the report from the city at planning and development, it looks like there's a whole bunch of trees, like it looks spread out. But that's not the way it is right now. And in conclusion, I just hope that you consider the uh the people that have lived on that block for all these years.
Okay, thanks very much. Don't don't run away yet. Are there any questions for the delegation? Councillor Friesen.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Thank you for coming in today and we did, I I did receive and review your letter and and photos with it. I believe that was yours. Thank you for that. You mentioned really three components that are bothering you and I have a couple of questions related to those three. One was the the lack of trees. You commented on the what was previously there and and um what's there now, the little three squished together. You also commented on the parking needing to be paved. And you also commented on the human element of the individuals that reside in the Karen. So if I could get you to prioritize, what's your greatest concern of those three elements?
The problems that we face, you mean the residents?
Uh yes, yeah, from the resident perspective of those who live around the building, not the residents in the building, because you represent those around. Is it um the um what what's been taken away? That is, the beautiful old trees in that landscaping? Is it that the parking needs to be paved or the the human element you commented on?
I think what's most upsetting to the people in the neighborhood is that we have to deal day to day seeing drug addicts walking by us. I have three little kids and it's just, it's it's awful.
What um? So that's to you the the most concerning and to that, the the trees and the pavement are secondary?
There's also a safety issue too. There isn't any designated spots for the cars to go in and out.
Right, and your your neighbor commented on that as well?
Sidewalk and.
Yeah, okay. Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thanks councillor Friesen. Any other questions for the delegation? Okay, I think for real this time, I don't see anybody else in the queue. Thanks very much for being here, Lisa. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that wishes uh to make presentation related to this development permit application, uh extension, excuse me? Is anybody else that wishes to make a presentation? Seeing none, um we will move on to business arising. Uh I guess this is where we probably get to those process questions, council. I've been trying to confer with the city manager, um you know, and council does have a range of, so this isn't quite as uh rigid as a public hearing. Council does have the opportunity to refer back to administration, uh to refer back to administration with some direction, um to look for, if there's a desire to look for alternatives, uh or to uh support any of the alternatives that are contained in the report, which include uh those recommended by administration, those requested by the applicant. And so we have a fairly broad range of latitude that's that's available here. Councillor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Question for administration. I have lots of other comments, but I'll wait till we get into debate of any motions. But um can you tell me, other than for following proper process, the reason um that you feel that the hard surfacing is needed by the deadline of July thirty-first, two thousand eighteen? Is there another reason besides following process?
Ms. Wright?
Mayor Given, councillor Clayton, um um this is uh looking to um grant an extension, but to have this hard standing completed. Um it's standard throughout the city through the city's land use by law that we actually do this.
Thank you.
Thanks councillor Clayton. Any other questions for administration? Councillor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. A question, something I'm not clear on is, there's been conversation about trees dying as the hard surface gets applied. Is that just a thought with the four trees that are in currently? Or is that a risk with any landscape that happens and later hard surfacing?
Ms. Wright?
Mayor Given, um councillor Bressi, um the comments that were made by Mr. Ellis, um those were site-specific. We had our parks department actually go out to look at the property and indicated that um it's fully expected these trees won't survive.
But sorry, is that just the four trees that are planted or would that be? So there's two issues here that it sounds like some colleagues are considering and that is separating out the landscaping requirements from the hard surfacing requirements. And I'm wondering what would happen to hypothetically if landscaping happened next summer and hard surfacing happened a few years from now? Would the new trees that were put in next summer also be subject to that same risk? Or is it just the four that are right there right now that are concerned?
Mayor Given, um councillor Bressi, um it's the four that are there. Um there's a an approved landscaping plan that city council approved with administration's recommendation. If that were to be followed, then the expectation is that the trees would survive and um all of the landscaping. But um the trees that have been planted were not as approved by council.
Thank you.
Thanks councillor Bressi. Councillor Plott?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I guess to kind of add on to councillor Bressi's comment, I can, my my gut's kind of saying these are two separate things right now too. So I'm not sure if we're at a spot where we're gonna make motions, but but I would be comfortable with making a motion that um the landscaping areas to be grass and the four trees along these property be done by um within a year or the 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 time extension that was requested by the by administration and the landscaping on the city on the hundred and fifth half and keep the parking uh separate.
So um.
So I guess.
Yeah, and and I don't have it in front of me in terms of which conditions those are related to. Mr. Wright, I don't know if you can help us sort out the conditions. Uh it is helpful if we can make uh specific reference to them in motions. Ms. Wright?
Absolutely, Mayor Given. Mr. Ellis is just gonna um um get the conditions here. I do, if I may, while he's doing that, just clarify, because there was a statement about current administration compared to previous administration and different views, that there was a requirement of seven to four paved parking stalls for this property back in two thousand and ten. We're currently looking at sixty-nine spaces um um with the the current um application.
And so uh we'll just let administration confer so we get the uh specifics on which points there are in the development permit there.
Through Mayor Given to councillor Plott, I'd just like to clarify the conditions. Condition six of the development permit states that paving, curbing and line painting for the proposed parking lot be completed by no later than September thirtieth, two thousand sixteen. That was the original condition. And we're talking about development permit PL one-six-zero-two-five-two that was approved in May of two thousand sixteen. Condition seven requires uh the solid board fencing by no later than July thirty-first and the uh the fencing's been completed. Condition eight requires the landscaping to be completed. Uh that includes the grass area and four trees along the east boundary of the proposed parking lot by no later than October thirty-first, two thousand sixteen. And condition ten requires the landscaping of the city boulevard along one-hundred-and-fifth avenue uh to include nine trees by no later than October thirty-first, two thousand sixteen. Our recommendation is to defer this until uh July thirty-first of two thousand eighteen, so next July.
Thanks very much, Ms. Ellis. And just uh in conferring with city manager, he has what might be a helpful suggestion to council, uh rather than uh working on the fly here with the relation to the specifics of the uh development permit.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through to council. I'm always loathe to to watch uh rewording of complex issues to occur on the fly, but it's clear that council has a redirect that they're contemplating. Just to clarify what's going on and why it's here today, two years ago, a develop, the city council of the day issued a development approval, uh a development permit with conditions applied. And the conditions were very specific. They were time-specific and they were task specific. Those conditions have not been been met. So the reason administration is bringing forward the recommendations that you see in front of you right now is because council's will was not followed by the developer. And so the recommendation is the consequences arise from that. So just to clarify why it's here and why it looks the way it does, it certainly wasn't anything intended to be punitive against any of the residents of the facility or the owner of the facility for that matter. It was just a matter of process. Rather than trying to reword the recommendations on the fly to get at exactly the right conditions, if it's the will of council that the two issues, the set, the landscaping issue and the parking issue be separated in time and that the landscaping issue be be satisfied within the first year and that the parking issue be satisfied in some other timeframe, that direction could be given to administration to bring back specific wording that would accomplish that to ensure that we don't misword it today and and have to come back later because it doesn't make sense.
Thanks for that advice. And so, you know, based on that, I think if um if council is contemplating something that is a specific intent, um then we could have motions describing that specific intent to direct administration to bring back amendments to the development permit reflecting X or Y. I think that's, that would be uh the nature of that. And then that way, we would ensure that they would come back in a way that's actually actionable and would fit in in the context of a development permit. Councillor Plott, I see you uh in the in the queue.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Um I I guess I kind of threw a motion out there, which we'll retract. But what I would, what I would say is that I would make a motion that we would approve condition ten, landscaping of city boulevard on one-hundred-and-fifth half to include nine trees no later than July thirty-first, two thousand eighteen.
So um we, so what may, can we follow the city manager's recommendation here? Because I don't think we can approve a one condition of it. We have to approve the development permit as a whole. I don't think we can uh do one-offs in it. But so if if you'd be okay with amending your motion to direct administration to bring back revisions to the development permit to reflect?
Okay. So I guess what Mayor Given said, um to to reflect the changes there on the on condition ten and the and the development approval.
So basically, a one-year extension in terms of landscaping.
I guess um the the concern of having around landscaping is condition eight is subject to landscaping on a lot that I'm wondering if we need to have a parking lot in at all. So that's why I was trying to put nine and ten separately. I think ten's kind of something we could potentially deal with today. Nine's kind of part and parcel of the parking lot.
Yeah, and and that might be the, that might be the challenge in in trying to do them on the fly here. Administration might have a uh better view with a bit of time on how they're interconnected.
Okay.
So councillor Plott, as long as I'm not changing the intent of your motion, that that uh extension of uh landscaping for a one-year time period to uh the date that you mentioned?
I guess I'll just withdraw it because I wouldn't want to put that on condition eight as well. Because I think if we're saying landscaping, we're saying landscaping on a on a parking lot and we're saying landscaping on the st- uh the city boulevard side. And I think they're two, they're asking for two separate conditions, so I would wanna leave them together, I guess, if that's the will of administration here. Maybe I'm missing something on that?
No, 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 I just rather like, again, just rather than us wordsmithing each individual uh development permit condition, if you wanna say the landscaping along one-hundred-and, is it one-hundred-and-fifth? The landscaping on one-hundred-and-fifth needs to be done by fall of next year, then we can talk about it in that level of intent. And so that's one thing that we'd direct administration to do. There may be another thing that we'd direct administration to do with respect to the hard surfacing. There may be another thing that we'd direct, you know, and so we can, without getting into the wording, really just highlight the intent.
Okay, um so I'd recommend that we do the landscaping on the city boulevard on one-hundred-and-fifty, one-hundred-and-fifth half by July thirty-first, two thousand eighteen.
Yeah, yeah. So a motion to direct administration to revise the development permit to reflect that intent. Is that clear to administration, the intent of councillor Plott's motion? Okay, I'm getting, I'm getting thumbs up from over there. It's all, for them, it's all about making sure that we get something that they can action, right? So, um okay, so we can open for discussion and debate on councillor Plott's motion. We will have an opportunity for discussion and debate on other parts of this again. Sure? Councillor Clayton?
A process question in regards to, it's it's common when these types of things are at um what is now infrastructure and protective services, that we would look through um the list of of conditions in the development permit and discuss them one by one. So I'm curious, I mean, administration may have lumped these together for um an ease of of um a process. However, I don't see a concern with us separating these now because it, in a normal IMP meeting, we would separate them and 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 at many times have discussed them one by one.
Yeah, no, I'm not suggesting that we don't discuss them one by one. I'm suggesting that we have to, at some point, approve an entire development permit, right? And an entire development permit has a bunch of things that might be connected. And so if there's thing, if there's a specific way we want administration to amend the development permit, then let's talk about those specifics, allow them to draft those specifics into one full development permit, and then then we'd see that and vote on that. Yeah, yeah. So I need discussion or debate on councillor Plott's motion uh to provide the extension with respect to the landscaping along the city boulevard on one-hundred-and-fifth. Councillor Blackburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm going to speak in in opposition of the motion only because I believe that um we need to be dealing with this in its entirety. And I would like to um uh if this motion is defeated, propose something that would be a little bit more comprehensive.
Okay, absolutely. Thanks councillor Blackburn. Councillor Friesen?
Thank you. I will actually be supporting this motion. I think it's unfortunate that there's nothing to be done about it now this year, but and and although I appreciate uh very much the frustrations that Mr. Cameron's had in this whole process and what he is doing, I don't think that um that the change to the the to the neighborhood has been any less concerning for the residents there. And I don't think it's too onerous to consider that the landscaping may be completed um as soon as is absolutely possible and that would be no no further out than next year. Absolutely. So I I will support um that extension of just till next year. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Friesen. And just in terms of context, so the way I'm imagining it, and just in case, you know, council think of it differently, this is direction to administration on how they would go away and amend the development permit. It would come back at a subsequent meeting of council with a full development permit that would have the wording that reflects the intent of the motions that we make here tonight. So this is direction to administration, not approving. Councillor Thieson?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Uh I'm uh I'm actually gonna support the motion as well, uh largely in in regards to the safety concerns that were presented by the residents in the neighborhood. When you look at the pictures that were presented by administration, uh we were aware of this before in our previous council, but it is sloping curb. It is a big, wide, open space and uh if cars are just ripping out in the street wherever because they don't have the drop-down curb, it does present a significant safety risk, which that landscaping will uh I guess prohibit to a certain degree or a larger degree. So to that extent and for the safety of our children, I'm gonna support this motion.
Thanks councillor Thieson. Councillor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Thank you, Mayor Given. Just to confirm, the motion is basically separating Item 10 out of the first recommended amendment from administration.
So?
Because already it has July 31st there. So all you're doing is pulling Item 10 out of the first recommendation. Okay. So speaking to that, then I will support that, that amend, that condition of, of the permit. People, regardless of they spoke in favor or in opposition to the amendment of other items, everybody agreed that the landscaping needed to be done in a timely matter. And realistically, I would be optimistic that no developer would plant trees after July 31st in hopes that they would grow. So I would think that the residents of this area will actually see the landscaping done in an earlier timeframe in 2018. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton. I'll speak in support of the motion. I believe giving this direction to administration is helpful. And for me, my particular concern is not just the aesthetics, but as Counselor Thiessen referenced, controlling access onto 105th and improvements to directing traffic there is, is my intent. Counselor Friesen?
Thank you. I actually would like to consider an amendment to the motion to, to include the curbing with that landscaping. And my reason in saying so was that that controls traffic flow. So whether or not the hard surfacing is done, at least the curbing around that area is done so that cars can understand where to drive, I think it'll protect the landscaping and it'll protect the flow of traffic or, or regulate the flow of traffic somewhat. So my suggestion would be to amend that direction to, to require that the landscaping and curbing on the property be done. Is that doable?
So without getting into the technical nature of what curbing looks like and what we mean by that, maybe, and this is why, we could give direction to administration that the landscaping on 105th and other appropriate measures to control access be incorporated? And then administration can, can bring back of what that looks like?
What that recommended, that would be fine. Thank you.
So that, so that's an amendment to Counselor Plot's motion to include and other appropriate measures to control access onto 105th. Administration can, can provide in the final version of the development permit what that means exactly? Counselor Thiessen?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I'm actually, sorry, Counselor Friesen, trying to figure out what that means. I'm looking at the picture and it does have curbing that exits onto the street. It is the sloped curbing of the sidewalk. I guess we could raise it on one side, but I'd have to see what administration's recommendation is, but I don't think there'd be any curbing required on there. Yeah. Okay.
So, sorry, so, so it's, all people saw there was Counselor Thiessen looking and nodding his head at you because your microphone wasn't on. So when we're doing discussion and debate, we'll have a council member ask a question, raise it or make a point, and then we'll have, if another council member wants to respond, then we'll make sure the microphones get on so everybody hears that. No problem, though. Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. In regards to Counselor Friesen's comments, I guess it's out of my scope of knowledge in regards if this is something that makes sense engineering-wise. I'm wondering if administration, either Director Galanti or somebody, has some comments in regards to how this looks to do curbing before paving.
So that, that's why I was making the reference to, or other appropriate measures to control access onto 105th, rather than getting into what appropriate, whether you get to put down curbs first or, you know, could you put down? There's a range of alternatives on how to do that. I see Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I appreciate where both Counselor Friesen and yourself are coming from in terms of providing direction. I am a little nervous with leaving it open because our, I like the idea of curbing because that is something where there's an investment and it looks okay. And, but when we start to work with the applicant to talk or discuss how that might look, then there's a lot of different interpretations of how restricting access. And if you go to the most bare bones, that would be just a few sawhorses put up between the gaps between the trees. And from an aesthetics perspective, we wouldn't think that that would be appropriate. It would limit access, but it wouldn't really achieve much from an aesthetics perspective. So that is a bit of a tough one. And then with respect to curbing and the, the nature of construction, if you're doing proper port-in-place curbing, curbing does occur prior to hard surfacing. There is a cheaper alternative, which is called pin-down curbing, and we, we really don't like that. And that's where you pave the parking lot. And then after, you put the curb on top and pin it down with rebar. And then the first time a snow clearing occurs, it gets picked up and dumped in the landscaping. So proper curbing, which is the most expensive, unfortunately, can be done prior to paving. And that certainly would achieve restricting the access. But I can't honestly say I've ever seen that done years in advance of hard surfacing. Obviously, they typically go hand in hand. So this, this might be a bit of a tough one. There may be some interim measures, like placement of large boulders or something like that.
Thanks, Mr. Johnson. I think that's the intent of the motion is for administration to work with the applicant to find an appropriate way that meets the intent of the motion and improvements in landscaping and controlling access. And I have confidence that administration would be able to negotiate that in a way that would be acceptable to council. And ultimately, council would judge whether the results of that that come forward in a development permit would, were acceptable to council or not. Counselor Blackburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Again, I'm going to be speaking in opposition to the amendment only because a lot of what we listened to tonight had to do with what the applicant can afford. And given some of the challenges that he's had regarding financing of this entire project, I'm just not comfortable suggesting that we add anything besides the landscaping to a requirement that when later on, we may be talking about whether or not any of these recommendations should be followed.
Thanks, Counselor Blackburn. Counselor Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll, once the amendment comes up, I will be voting against it. Maybe I'm over-optimistic of grand prix driving habits, but I, I feel like landscaping it will help with those access issues. But speak to a bigger issue. I really am worried about the, as we've alluded to earlier, we really are talking off the cuff here. And we are, we are talking about changing this in ways that administration hasn't, hasn't proposed. And I'm worried about that. I think that there's a motion, there's a motion on the table, and I don't think it's in order for me to make it, but I will be making a, I do intend to be making a motion that we postpone this to future council meetings. I really am worried about the consequence of us speaking off the cuff without recommendations that clear picture of where we're going.
Sure. And in, in terms of postponing, Counselor Bressi, in terms of postponement, that doesn't actually get us more information. So, you know, just in terms of our intent and wanting to have full information here, I think we need to be giving administration some, some direction on, so what do you want to see next time we come back? And I guess that's, that's where I was hoping we would be able to go with these motions of direction to administration. We're giving them a direction on the kind of amendments that we'd like to see. And, and then we would see that in a finalized form before we voted on approving or not approving a development permit that arose. But this is, this is, you know, a messy way of council explaining what we'd like to see. And then administration needs to write it up in a way that makes sense under our land use bylaw and needs to negotiate with the developer to, to find something that they think will meet council's intent. And, don't get me wrong, it ain't pretty. But if we, if we simply postpone the discussion, we haven't given administration to bring back anything extra. We said we're going to talk about it later. Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I'm actually going to echo Counselor Bressi and Counselor Blackburn. I won't be supporting this amendment. I do believe that the landscaping will be fined in order to get that done as soon as possible at the lowest expense possible that can control traffic in a suitable way. In the meantime, I do believe that curbing would cost a lot. But I'm also going to be speaking in agreeance with Counselor Bressi. I don't think he was suggesting that we bring it back to the next council meeting. I'm actually personally leaning towards maybe bringing this forward to a CCW workshop where we can have a good, solid, robust discussion with administration and figure out what this council wants to do. This is, welcome to DC 14. This has been how councils dealt with this property over the duration and part and parcel, adding and subtracting little bits and pieces here. I think it's important and imperative that, I guess, the new members of council have a complete understanding of the Karen property and, and how they want to see it developed in order to mitigate, I guess, the concerns of the residents and also to mitigate, I guess, the financial burden to the owner of the property. So I would be, I would be in support of postponing it to a CCW so that we can have a better discussion on this.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor Thiessen. Just in terms of advice, I don't think it's a postponement to a CCW. I think it would be postponed consideration of the development permit subject to a council committee, the whole discussion around, right? Counselor Plot?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Sorry to fellow councillors here, maybe I left us on a wild goose chase, but I, after hearing you guys deliberate, I, I do want to actually retract my motion. I think it is better to probably look at doing a, a further look at this. And, and I am just trying to one-off this. Because even as I'm looking at this, one of my concerns is, do we even need this to be a parking lot? And so having trees go up and trying to put boulders or something up to make a temporary fix probably isn't the best use of this, of this at this time. So I will just retract my motion and I apologize to everybody here for wasting about 50 minutes of our time.
And so we do have an ability for council members to withdraw their motion. Yeah, which we have an amendment on. So thanks a lot for making that easy on me as I've got a procedure bylaw here.
You don't have it memorized?
Yeah, no. But I think the, the intent to withdraw the motion, if somebody else wished to, the mover of the amendment wished to make a motion independent of that to do something specific, then you could have that ability. But if you wish to withdraw the motion, I think we'll rule that in order. And I would look for any other business arising. Counselor Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Let me try this out, and I'm open to help, but I would, I would move that we, I would, I would move to refer this matter to Council Committee of the Whole. Is that a motion that's in order?
A motion of referral absolutely would be...
Or, or does it have, I understand that, I understand that council as a whole is a development authority on this, but would it be in order to refer this to one of our standing committees, likely Infrastructure and Protective Services, to come forward with recommendations to council as a whole? Would that be a good way to potentially work this?
Well, I mean, I guess that's up to council about what sort of approach that they'd like to take. Just looking in terms of ruling, I think, and I'll, I'll need administration's assistance here because we do have a development permit in front of us that we need to consider at some point in one way or another. Mr. Johnson?
I'll take a stab at it. Or thank you, Mayor Given. I'll take a stab at it and perhaps Legislative Services Manager can chime in if I go off on the wrong way. But I think that it is entirely possible that it could be referred down to the Infrastructure and Protective Services Committee for discussion and direction, but it would ultimately come back from committee with a recommendation to council. And it would, and we would be right back in the same position.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I, I think the suggestion that it be referred to Council Committee of the Whole is a good one. Just judging from the level of interest that has emerged around the table on a complex issue that affects the community and affects the developer, Council Committee of the Whole is perfectly suited to get at that with full council involvement. It also allows us to move in camera if there are specific legal issues that we need to consider as well. And then by the time it's coming back arising from Council Committee of the Whole, the full council has been apprised and had a chance to deliberate, and management will have been given a chance to word appropriately the outcome of that, that process.
Okay. Thanks very much for that, Mr. City Manager. So Counselor Bressi, with your concurrence, let's make that a motion of referrals. So refer consideration of the development permit request to a council, future Council Committee of the Whole meeting?
Yes, that is the motion I'd like to make. Sorry, I was cued to speak and then anyways. And just speak to the motion. It's a, it is a complicated subject. I really do see both sides of this. I really do see the need for the Karen. It's a clear need in our, in our community. At the same time, I really feel for those who need to, need to live with it. And it is a very tough situation of how do you balance the needs of the residences that are already there as well as the needs of the new residents that are there now and will be there in the future? It's a complicated subject, and I want to make sure we're giving this its due diligence to do the best planning that we possibly can with this. So I hope that the rest of council will be supportive of this motion.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor Bressi. Counselor Clayton?
Mayor Given, I won't be supporting this motion, although I can appreciate what Counselor Bressi's intent is here. I don't think administration's going to bring us any new information that we haven't had access to already. I think that we absolutely could make some decisions here tonight, so I won't be supporting this motion.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton. Counselor Blackburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm thinking that if this does get referred to Committee of the Whole, that it would be important for there to be a recommendation for us to debate rather than just taking what's already been considered here or proposed here and chewing it out all over again. I would prefer to see us make a proposal to administration about some things that, that we think need to be dealt with and then have them bring that to Committee of the Whole so that we have something new to chew on. So I would oppose the, the motion as presented, and I would be prepared to make a different one.
Well, and, and, you know, based on the advice of the City Manager, a good suggestion, if there are specific issues that you would like to see included in that referral to Council Committee of the Whole, perhaps now would be a time to amend Counselor Bressi's motion. And so it'd be refer the issue of the development permit to Council Committee of the Whole meeting and direct administration to bring forward information related to alternatives on, on what? Is the fill-in-the-blank part? And that's what, so an amendment saying, look, we want more information on this, that, or the other thing?
Sure. I'm going to recommend that administration look at the possibility of, first of all, removing the sanctions, the, the proposed fines. And secondly, to look at the possibility of allowing the extension on, for up to five years on the paving and to go ahead with requiring the landscaping by the end of next July. And the reason that I would suggest these amendments is that it gives administration something specific to work with, and if they have any particular concerns about any of those recommendations, they can bring them forward to us. I, I really do believe that, I'd like a sober second thought on the reasons behind requiring the paving, for instance. And I do agree that, that for the benefit of the residents, it would be a good idea to get the landscaping done sooner than later. But I really don't believe that it would be to anybody's benefit to apply some of the sanctions that have been suggested based on some of the things we heard in our presentations tonight.
Okay. And so Counselor Blackburn, can you just clarify for me and for administration, so your motion to amend Counselor Bressi's referral to Council Committee of the Whole to request administration also bring forward at that time? Can you restate those for me?
Sure.
One?
One, consider allowing the five-year extension on the paving. Two, require the landscaping to be done by the end of July next year. Three, to remove the recommendations for fines or sanctions on, as were originally proposed.
Okay. I think we may have ended up in a very similar place to where we started this discussion, where I was trying to give some specific direction to administration on some points that we thought were important. But what we have done is said that we want to talk about these points that are important to us at a Council Committee of the Whole. to us at a council committee of the whole forum, which is, is fair. Uh, one issue that sound, I would like to see discussed is the justification for the number of stalls, uh, and whether, um, whether that, uh, number of stalls is correct. Like that, that's a discussion I'd like to have at council committee of the whole to see whether this council, uh, agrees with the conditions and the development permits, that number of stalls continues to be required. So, um, I can't make any motions, but if, uh, I don't know if anybody else...
If you want to add that to, to my amendment motion, I'd be happy to accept that.
Thanks councillor Blackburn. Um, is there any other, um, so councillor Blackburn has made a motion to amend the referral, include some topics that we'd like administration to bring back some further perspective on. Um, any discussion or debate on that referral motion? Councillor, uh, amendment to the referral motion? Councillor Plot?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Um, I like the direction we're going here, I guess, from hearing from a property manager, from the, the building owner, from tenants in there, from seeing the pictures. I'm not convinced we even need the parking, so I would like to see a little bit higher level view of what the parking's for and, and what it's there, cause it, it directly impacts the safety issues off 105th Ave, landscaping and everything else. So, um, I would support this amendment because I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not convinced that we even need the parking, to be honest. And, uh, I think when you have a building that's fully occupied and it sounded like it was 800 square feet empty, it's basically fully occupied. So if it's not utilizing the parking at this point, I don't know why we would be forcing that upon the developer to do. And also, uh, from the city's perspective, there's a potential that maybe these lots could be repurposed to something else that could actually, uh, further enhance the community as well, so.
Okay. Thanks councillor Plot. Councillor, I'll just, councillor Bressi on the amendment?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I think I'll be voting against the amendment and the reason is, in my mind, we do need to give sober thought and we do need to see recommendations on what to do with future use of this. In my mind, that is a, that is different than the current sanctions that are before this. There's an issue of the developer was given directions by council, missed the deadline, and that needs to be addressed. And in my mind, that is a different issue than future, than future directions that this bo, that this body gives.
Mr. City Manager? Do you have a comment?
Uh, just if I can clarify, uh, administration's interpretation of the amendment as it sits right now, you are not voting on whether or not those fines would be removed. You're voting on whether or not that consideration should come back to you. You're at liberty when and if it's brought back to you to vote in any direction that you want. You just have more information.
And, and at this stage, we're talking about councillor Blackburn's amendment motion? Um, and so, um, is there any other discussion or debate on that amendment to identify those, uh, specific items? Councillor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Um, it's indirectly in regards to the amendment, but I have a question for administration that I need the answer for first. Um, can administration tell me in regards to the stop order, uh, and the second offense fine of $1,000 and, and the cease of commercial uses? Is this how it's written or you've put this all together? Tell me why all the things all at once. I mean, I can support the fine stopping use of such a, an important, uh, um, occupant that's currently in the building, the service that they provide, um, having them cease business isn't realistic in my mind. So tell me why this is all, is this how it's written or why is it all together like this?
Mr. Johnson?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Given. Certainly it is not, uh, the land use bylaw is not, uh, worded such that we're obligated to throw those out as recommendations. We put forward the recommendations because this was an ongoing issue and we felt that it was an opportunity for council to send a message to the developer that it was time to get this work done. And in a year, we don't want to be in the exact same position that we've already been in before. And so, um, to speak somewhat informally, uh, our, our patience with this was running a little thin and this was starting to use some of the tools in the land use bylaw that council has as an opportunity to get some of the work done that was required when the development permit was initially issued.
Councillor Friesen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would support the amendment if the imposition of fines were removed from that amendment. So I'm not sure how to go about that, but I do think that the, the imposition of the fines, it's just clear to me that we do have a developer who's in non-compliance with the conditions of a development permit. And I think that there are repercussions to that and a $250 fine at this point in time and perhaps a $1,000 fine going forward is, is different from massaging what the rest of the development permit might look like. I would like to see those removed from consideration, um, and I will follow up with a motion to impose that $250 fine tonight.
Uh, thanks councillor Friesen. Um, again, just in terms of context, the intent of the motion is to refer all of this stuff for discussion at another time, after which, uh, after that discussion, we would make some decisions about what we did or didn't do. Uh, I think the intent of the, the, uh, enumeration of specific items to be considered, um, is direction to administration to bring back information related to the implications of those specific issues, not a determination of whether a fine is or isn't imposed, uh, because that's still, council will have that latitude to, to vote on that. Um, because nothing here tonight in this, in this motion of referral, um, speaks to approving or not approving the development permit or any specific conditions. Saying, we need to think about this in a different forum and we'd like a little bit of additional perspective on these issues for us to think about at that time. Councillor, I, I see councillor Blackburn in the queue, um, but I'll come back to you to close on the amendment. Uh, I'll go to councillor O'Toole.
Thank you much, Mayor Given. Uh, when we do come back, if that's the decision of council, I would like to have a discussion on the on-street parking, uh, what administration feels which is adequate or, or their concerns with on-street parking, uh, in this situation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. And I would think that would be inclusive of that discussion around the justification around for the, for the parking stalls. Okay. Uh, councillor Blackburn, anything to close on the amendment, uh, which identified some specific issues, uh, that we were looking for additional, uh, perspective or information from administration?
Uh, thank you. I, I would just close by suggesting that my reason for making specific suggestions to ask, uh, administration to consider is so that we would have something concrete to debate. I'm not recommending that, um, we would need to approve each of those once we've had further expiration. I just want something for us to, to be able to debate.
Okay. Thanks councillor Blackburn. Um, so I just, I'll look to administration and put you on the spot. Um, what have you been able to record for our motion? Uh, and we're voting specifically on the amendment. So what do you see as councillor, uh, Blackburn's amendment? We'll make sure that we have all got it, got it right.
Thank you, Mayor. What I have right now is the amended motion is would move to refer this matter to council committee of the whole for further review, discussion and direction from administration with consideration given to the following. One, review the sanction of the proposed fines. Two, second, allowing the extension for up to five years on the paving and landscaping to be completed, oh, sorry, paving to be completed. Three, to complete the landscaping by July 2018. And four, to have administration provide justification to the number of parking stalls required.
Does that meet our intent, council? And so that's the, that's the specific issues that we've identified to administration that we'd like to discuss. Um, and there may be others that arise at that meeting, but those are the ones that tonight we've said, hey, these are some things that we'd like to discuss specifically at that council committee of the whole. Uh, and so I'll call for the vote on councillor Blackburn's amendment. Um, councillor Blackburn was to close. That was to clarify the motion. Councillor O'Toole?
I wanted, I just wanted to make sure that I am going to vote in this. There was concerns earlier in the, in the, uh, debate and, uh, and I have no funding coming from any source. It was a location that I chose, I asked, and there was three other councillors that there signs on there. Uh, that's it. So I have no monetary gain here at all. Thank you.
Thanks councillor O'Toole. Um, I will call for the vote on the amendment. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries and so, uh, we'll move to councillor Bressi's motion of referral as amended. Uh, is there any other discussion or debate on the, uh, on the motion of referral to council committee of the whole? Councillor Plot?
More just for, um, for the folks that are here tonight, just to know. So timelines, can we maybe just kind of let the, the folks in the gallery tonight know just so they don't think we're, we're not dealing with this, kind of approximately when we'd be getting back with some answers?
Yeah. Um, yeah, I, the city manager and, and, uh, development and planning are discussing with whose, whose baby that is. Uh, but, uh, one thing that I'll say before Mr. Johnson responds is that, uh, council committee of the whole doesn't have, and I'll check this to make sure, council committee of the whole doesn't have the authority to approve a development permit that would require coming back to an appropriate council meeting. So it would have to, and ultimately the development permit would have to be approved here at a public council meeting, because council is a development, uh, authority. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. With respect to timelines, I believe that, uh, just to be safe and make sure that we're doing, uh, a very good job making a, uh, providing a council with a comprehensive report covering all issues that, uh, we would be into probably early February of 2018, I think. Um, that's my best guess.
Okay. Um, and obviously subject to council being able to, you know, arrange and, and come together for, uh, committee of the whole. Councillor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just for point of process without revoting, could it be noted that I voted incorrectly and I would like to be, uh, recorded as voting no on the amendment?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Sure. Um, and that was on the amendment, but not on the main motion?
Well, we haven't had that voted yet.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Um, so in terms of process, councillor Plot, uh, the council committee of the whole will be subject to sort of scheduling and administration devising, uh, how quickly they can get the perspective that councils ask for. Um, but ultimately the development permit cannot be approved at a council committee of the whole. It would have to come back to a council meeting in a public forum like this, uh, where there would be an opportunity for people to see that decision-making. Uh, any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. That motion carries. Uh, so unless there's any other business arising, I believe that's probably about as much as we can consider with respect to this development permit application. Um, it is, uh, neither approved nor denied. Um, council's decided that they want to have a discussion about some of the issues related to it. Uh, you've heard that discussion here tonight in pretty full sort of version of it, um, but council's looking for some additional information. That council committee of the whole meeting will be scheduled, um, and, uh, appropriate notice would be sent out. Uh, but ultimately any development permit, uh, approval or consideration has to happen at a regular city council meeting like this. Uh, and so that would only follow after that council committee of the whole meeting had happened. I believe that concludes all of our business with respect to item 8.1, uh, and we can move into committee business, uh, starting with item 9.1. Councillor Blackburn, did you have something further?
Uh, a short point of privilege, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to let administration know that, that I have a great deal of respect for the amount of work that they've done on this already. I just hope that people will understand that there was, um, a, a lot of information brought to the table tonight that, that forced me to want to reconsider and it certainly no snub on the work that's been done so far by the administration.
They're used to us doing this. Uh, so we'll move on to item 9.1, uh, Infrastructure and Protective Services Committee from November 28th. Councillor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council, um, adopt or accept the minutes as presented from the Infrastructure and Protective Services Meeting held November 28th, um, 2017.
Okay. Thanks very much councillor Clayton. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions that we need to correct? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Clayton, anything you wanted to highlight?
Sure. Yeah, just a, a couple items, if I may. Uh, we had a presentation, uh, from the Grand Prairie Urban Hens Association, uh, and they will, and a motion was passed to direct administration to bring back amendments, uh, to the animal control bylaw to include, uh, urban hands for committee's review. So that is now on the outstanding items list. Um, as well, there was a presentation from Mr. Larry Gibson from ATCO in regards, uh, information on LED streetlights, uh, what the opportunities are, the potential in our city and as well as, uh, current inventory, um, and positive impacts from generation of the new technology. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks councillor Clayton. Um, that was all of our committee business, uh, and, uh, we had no items corresponded. So, uh, delegation, delegation business, item number 11 would be next up. Uh, we had one del, public delegation related to St. Joe's, um, sorry, the new, uh, JP2. Councillor Thieson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I would, uh, I would make a motion, well, I would move that, uh, we refer the, the St. Paul intersection sidewalk pathway transit stop, et cetera, to the appropriate standing committee.
Okay. Thanks very much councillor Thieson. Uh, any discussion or debate on that motion of referral? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, uh, and that would take us, uh, as a notice of motion, which we have none this evening, uh, into council member reports. And, uh, we had a number of council members that let me know ahead of time that they did have some reports. We'll start off with councillor O'Toole with the Competitive Sports Commission.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. This afternoon at lunchtime, we had a meeting for the Competitive Sports Commission, my first one of this term. And, uh, we are in the process of, uh, supplying our services to an event, uh, happening at the E, uh, Entrec Center on Feb, or December 15th. Um, it looks like it's going to be an amateur and pro-am, uh, event. So, uh, there you go. That's it. We're, we're in good shape right now. Thank you.
Thanks very much councillor O'Toole. Uh, next up was, uh, Grand Spirit Foundation and councillor Blackburn, I believe, had a bit of an update from a recent meeting?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. Um, on December 1st, I attended a full board meeting of the Grand Spirit Foundation Board and, um, I just wanted to give, um, folks a heads up that one of the things that the board did was, um, approve an increase in the requisition that, um, will come from the Grand Spirit Foundation for property taxes for next year in the amount of 5%. Um, I have no information on what those impacts might be on individual, um, homeowners. Uh, just, uh, just a heads up that it's, it's one of the things that they looked at. They also, uh, voted an increase of $5 per unit in their rental fees. So a very modest increase, um, in revenues for the foundation.
Okay. Thanks very much councillor Blackburn. Uh, councillor Thieson, I believe you had an update, uh, from Grand Prairie Youth Council?
Oh, youth council, all right. I was getting ready for the Peace Library, but, uh, yes, uh, this past, uh, Wednesday, November 29th, I met with, uh, members of youth council. Uh, the purpose of the meeting was just to introduce, uh, the new appointed members of council to the youth council. Uh, we also undertook, uh, an inclusion workshop with a group, uh, headed up by CandyCon, uh, was featured in the Daily Herald Tribune, went to several different service areas in the city of Grand Prairie and asked them questions like, what does inclusion look like? How can we create more inclusive community? Then they went to other service organizations. Youth council was the last stop. So that was the majority of our, of our meeting outside of the hi, how are yous and this is the new youth council and this is councillor Thieson. Again, uh, we also did, uh, briefly touch on some of the new committees that, or the subcommittees, I guess, that youth council has set up inside of their larger structure and picking other youth to really focus on health and safety, uh, you know, uh, arts and culture, uh, entertainment and, uh, transportation in and around the city. So it's, uh, really exciting to see and hear just, uh, a brief synopsis, very high level of what the committees are doing and I look forward to the next youth council meeting, uh, to see what further they're doing and how they're progressing along there.
Councillor Thieson, since you're so excited about it, and do you want to do Peace Library System?
Yes, uh, thank you. Very super excited. On November 25th, uh, the Peace Library Systems Board had their annual general meeting. It's not really the annual general meeting, we changed the name of it, uh, but, uh, it, it serves the purpose of an annual general meeting. At that meeting, uh, we approved the 20, uh, 2018 budget, uh, and we reviewed the 2017 financial forecast, uh, numbers came in as a surplus of about $163,000 to Peace Library Systems. This is largely due to temporary staff vacancies and a delay in implementing some of our new technologies across the library service system. Uh, we also elected, uh, or re-elected Veronica Blisca from the MD of Peace as the chair of the board and Carolyn Kolibaba from Northern Sunrise County as vice chair, uh, to the Peace Library System. We further approved the capital budget for 2018, I think I already mentioned that. And then we also received a report on outreach to indigenous communities, uh, and many of our member libraries in the Peace Library System are making strong efforts to, uh, attract indigenous, indigenous patrons and raise awareness of indigenous culture through programming, literature and other, and other means of, of connecting with that population. So it's really encouraging that these indigenous populations grant, that's a province started giving out two years ago, are working, not just through Peace Library System, but through the member libraries as well. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councillor Thieson. I think that was all the reports from our external agencies, so I'll just look to make sure that I didn't forget any and it doesn't seem that I did. And so we'll move to Councillor Bressi for council member roundtable.
Well, thank you, Mayor Given. The day after our last council meeting, I headed out to the first day of the Alberta Urban Municipalities Association, which you guys all joined me at. And then immediately after that, I went on vacation, so I don't have too much to report. But while on vacation, I did take the opportunity to go see a talk given by the San Diego Chief of Police and have a great conversation with her afterwards. And a few interesting tidbits I got from there was they were the first American municipality, major municipality to institute body cameras and they have some great stats about how well that did take care of complaints. They've also got stats to back up, they were one of the first municipalities to get automatic sound detection of gunshots fired, so they can automatically respond. And they had an interesting program called the SMART Program, which was diverting chronic small-time offenders into housing first initiatives and its counseling initiatives. And it was a really great example of an innovative police department getting some really tangible results. And got me excited about, I hope that we can be on the cutting edge with our RCMP friends in the future of piling some things. It got me excited about that. One other interesting tidbit was she talked a lot about legalization of marijuana, where California, if you don't know, they're going to be legalizing California January 1st, where we are legalizing it July 1st, so they're six months ahead of us in their process. One of the things they did was they did a lot of visits as police to other jurisdictions that already legalized it, but also they'd been the site of, San Diego had been the site for 11 legal dispensaries for two years by the time I visited. And a concerning statistic there was of those 11 illegal dispensaries, they had 272 calls over two years and they also had a number, so that was two of those dispensaries for robbery for whatever. There were also a lot of calls in the city with children overdosing on, or potentially overdosing on edibles. So definitely do get me concerned about potential resource needs for our police department and our other first responders coming up after July.
Thanks very much, Councillor Bressi. Councillor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. As Councillor Bressi said, we did attend the AUMA and it was an exciting experience as it is usually, but I do want to talk about a couple things. I did attend the Aquatera Shareholders Year-End Meeting and also as amongst other councillors. And I got the opportunity to emcee the Annual International Day of Peoples with Disabilities and I'd like to thank Councillor Chris Thieson for presenting on behalf of the mayor and council and for Councillor Friesen for being there as well. I also had one more event that I attended was the Cam Prairie Event. It's a number of people that moved here from Cameroon in Africa and at this particular part of the timeline, there is a civil unrest there and what they did try to explain to the members that showed up was the fact that there's a lot of violence going on. People are dismembering other people. These people that were at this event have family members that have been either murdered, had amputations done to them and others, terrible, terrible things. And they chose to leave the country to come to Canada because it is a safe country and they're looking forward to ending the unrest out there and trying to get more people over here where it's a little bit more stable. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. Councillor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Something new, I'll leave a couple of them to other people, but yesterday was obviously Santa Parade. Thoroughly enjoyed being there with fellow councillors, Thieson, Mayor Given, Councillor O'Toole. And Grand Prairie Youth Council was there, which was great. It was, I really enjoyed the change of the parade route in addition of the tree lighting ceremony, which I'm sure other people will address, but I think that it was a great turnout. There was many people that were there that said they'd never been to a Santa Parade, didn't know what it involved and the weather was good. And so I think that it was a really nice piece for our community, sort of to get everybody in the holiday season. So thank you to administration who put that together. The float was great, Santa was great and it was well executed. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Councillor Clayton. Councillor Friesen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. The Santa Parade yesterday, I was part of the after-party serving up some cookies and singing in the choir. That was pretty fun. One thing I did the past couple of weeks that really demonstrates the enthusiasm of residents of Grand Prairie was the lighting of the Tree of Hope, which is on 100th Avenue, or sorry, 100th Street around 86th Avenue. And if you get a chance to head past it, just give a honk to the homeowners. They at, with a little bit of support from the community, but their own time and expense have put that Tree of Hope together and that kind of enthusiasm from community members really makes Grand Prairie special. I enjoyed that. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councillor Friesen. Councillor Platt?
Probably turn my mic on. Was a busy, like everybody else, we were at AUMA, that was busy and a few events since, but the one that kind of highlighted for me was the opening of the Roy Bechel School. I hadn't been part of a school opening and the conversation with Sandy McDonald afterwards saying that there's a lot of superintendents in their career that don't go through opening a school. And something that maybe I've taken for granted in Grand Prairie that we're fairly fortunate that we've had a few new schools open and more new schools coming. And so I'm grateful that we actually have some new schools in Grand Prairie and it was cool to see the excitement with the kids and it's a beautiful facility, so it was great to be part of. Thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Platt. Councillor Blackburn?
There we go. Thank you. Of course, I attended some of the same things that others have already mentioned and I won't reiterate them. I would just like to add that it was a great pleasure to be at the Helen Rice Plaza dedication the other night. By the time I got there, the tree was already lit and it was getting dark and the plaza looked fabulous. There were lots of friends of Helen's there to enjoy the evening with her and it was a pleasure to see her being honored in that way. I was also very pleased to see that she was a recipient of the Senate of Canada 150th Commemorative Medal, a well-deserved honor for her.
Absolutely. Thanks very much, Councillor Blackburn, a fellow Senate 150 Medal recipient. Councillor Thieson?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Now, I have a lot of events that I really could touch on. I've been doing my duty as the deputy mayor here the last little bit and it's been quite busy, but I am going to touch on a couple of things and I think I'm going to focus first on me and then on the council highlights, because I think it's important that we do that from time to time. I was really honored to be able to be the deputy mayor and to bring greetings and share words at the Roy Bechel School opening on November 30th. I was in attendance with many trustees and councillors. For me personally, it was extra special because Roy was a friend of mine. So anytime you get to, you know, speak upon a friend and their contribution to the community, it's always truly an honor and it's one of those few times that I actually wrote down what I was going to say, because I didn't want to miss any of Roy's life highlights and I really wanted to honor him in front of the kids and point out how multi-dimensional he was. He wasn't just a fossil guy or a teacher guy. He was a lot of things to this community, so I was really happy to be able to do that. Also, it's also honored to be able to do those greetings at the International Day of Persons with Developmental Disabilities. One of the highlights for me actually is Councillor O'Toole, who undertook the emcee duties, you know, and it's always entertaining. The guy's a big lovable teddy bear up on stage and, you know, he's not the most polished speaker and he does cry. He's crying right now, but honestly, I'm always entertained and I know it's all coming from a good place. So I just wanted to say, councillor, friend, great job at that as emcee. This is from a fellow emcee. You did awesome. All right, so AUMA, incredible. I took in a bunch of really excellent sessions, I had some team-building experiences, got to tour areas of Calgary I never got to see before, went to bed early because I stayed away from Jackie on a night or two, but it was kind of my loss, you know, those are memories I'm never going to be able to get back because I never made them. But one memory that I do have that I'm very, very proud of is that we as a team went down to Calgary in parts to, you know, bond and to learn from AUMA, but also to help a teammate get elected to the Board of Directors. And it was such a great experience to go down there and be one of, I guess, nine people trying to get Bill elected to the Board of Directors. And I think of the 12 people that I talked to from Midsize Cities, all of them said, yeah, yeah, I'm voting for Bill. And that translated in the first vote election. So very impressive considering that there are also candidates from Strathcona County, from Red Deer, from Airdrie, from St. Albert and Grand Prairie. And our mayor, Bill Given, was elected with almost 50% of the entire Midsize Cities vote, 48.9%, 1% yes. Yeah, give him a round of applause. Congratulations, Bill. You earned it, 16 years and a lot of hard work and I think that was recognized by your peers in and around the province. So I know you're going to spread the good word to Grand Prairie and Midsize Cities and, you know, put a little pressure on the government as a member of the Board of Directors as my favorite councillor of all time. This beautiful lady once did as the president of AUMA. It was also an honor to take part in the dedication of the Helen Rice Plaza. Bill did DMC work and he did a great job there, but it was just nice to see Helen in all of her glory with all of her friends and family sitting around there. I was more than honored to be there. I've read about three-quarters of the way through this book and I recommend to all the new councillors, definitely take her advice because there's a lot of good advice, especially early on, and then the stories are great as you go through. Ironically enough, in a point of interest, I didn't know this, but quote Helen Rice, she'd kill for Chris Thieson. Thank you very much.
For or would kill?
She would kill for me.
Might have been a typo, you never know.
Watch out all my enemies out there.
Thanks very much, Chris Thieson, Councillor Thieson, and thanks very much for that highlighting of the election of the Board of AUMA. Really appreciated council member's support through the convention and your support of me seeking that position in the first place. It will take me out of Grand Prairie a few more times, but certainly, as we've seen with Helen's involvement in AUMA, it has a benefit to the city and our ability to have a voice in provincial decision-making is always useful. So I certainly appreciate council supporting me in seeking that position. I just wanted to highlight another announcement that was made at the AUMA convention. The Minister of Economic Development, Darren Villis, announced that a second round of funding for economic development projects from a program called CARES. And our tri-municipal partnership was successful in receiving $250,000 from that program. And so that was a great announcement to be able to take part in and I think it demonstrates the government's appreciation for us working with our neighbors to help diversify the economic development opportunities in the region. So that was great to be able to attend that at AUMA. The other thing that I wanted to highlight that nobody had mentioned is on the 30th, a number of us had an opportunity to be in Sexsmith to attend the first intermunicipal meeting of this new council term where all of the local councils from within the county of Grand Prairie got together and it was a great chance to get caught up on some topics that impact all of us, like the Wapiti River Plan and Grand Spirit Foundation and the development of the new hospital. But great to start that relationship building with the other councils in our region and certainly didn't want to miss highlighting that. And it has been referenced previously, but the dedication of H.A. Rice Plaza, Revolution Place, certainly appreciated the opportunity to do that. And boy, what a fitting legacy and recognition of one of Alberta's longest-served elected officials and certainly a figure who has been influential and transformative in terms of her involvement in Grand Prairie and really in Alberta and the country. So it was an honor and a pleasure to be able to join with other council members, both current and past, as well as current and past members of city administration there. And I think it speaks very highly of Helen that so many people that have worked with her in the past were ready to come back and celebrate with her. With that, we'll call our meeting adjourned. Thank you.